All right, we are back from lunch. Madam Clerk, item number 23.
Item 23 is from the Administrative Office. To receive an update on recent mailings to vacation rentals on requirements that they obtain a business license to rent a room or space out in Calaveras County.
This is being presented by?
Well, and I was gonna say, this was requested by a board member to bring forward with the discussion point. I know Barbara Sullivan can provide more details in terms of the timeline, but this evolved from a letter that was sent out to a number of residences who are also renting a room or a residence, and some of the concerns within the letter requiring them to obtain a business license and questions regarding that. So, this was really as an information item to allow the tax collector an opportunity to kind of talk about what process changed, what was different, and allow some feedback and comments from the board.
Okay. Ms. Sullivan?
Hello, Barbara Sullivan. Regarding the change, there wasn't a change, only that we did an audit of the accounts that we have under TOT, and we find out that those that are renting their homes out as a vacation rental should have a business license. And it's pretty standard in the code, so I don't know if county council wants to chime in on, it doesn't separate anybody from a home versus a hotel versus, you know, somebody's room. Peter Mauer's a good one. He rents out a room, and he has a business license. So, we do an audit, like I said, I haven't had staff, last two years I've built it back, my staff, so now we've gone through and found out that a lot of the TOT people, when we were setting them up recently because of the certificate they have to have, we weren't catching that they didn't have a business license. So, that's what brought this letter about. It was sent out to about 138 people in the county and out of county, whoever owns the rentals here, and it strictly just states code that we were looking through, and we found out they didn't have a business license. So, that's it. It's pretty simple.
Supervisor Olivera, are your lights on? You have questions?
I do. Can you show me where in the code? I couldn't find it, and I mean, that, not the first time that happened, but...
Yeah, it's right at the beginning. The code's about this big, it's pretty small.
Title 20, all right? It's Title 20, Ms. Sullivan.
I'm sorry?
Title 20.
Well, it's listed in the letter, it's 5.04.
It's in Title 5 as well.
Pardon?
It's in Title 5 as well.
5.04, the business license.
For business license.
Is that a hard copy of that?
No, it's just the letter that I stated to everybody, the code part of it.
Madam Clerk, could you bring that up? My computer is, I'd like to see that in the code. My computer's still charging.
I just want to point out that since my name was brought up, or county council's brought up, I don't know that anybody in our office has been asked to research this issue, so we have not reached any conclusions, just so you know.
Supervisor Mills, why don't you do that? Your lights on?
Yes, so this included some of the residences in Copper along the lake.
Includes everyone that has TOT. We didn't go to a specific area, it's anybody in the county that was renting out their place.
I guess, I'm being more specific, is this for those short-term vacation rentals, not TOTs? Under Title 20, we have, they have to submit a application for a permit?
Yes, and they go to planning for that.
Right.
Right.
So, this is only applying to TOTs that you're knowing, that you know right now?
Correct. That's when we noticed we weren't doing both.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, could you give me the code section again, please?
Sure. It is chapter 5.04 of the code. Darn, I meant to, I looked at it before I came over.
Maybe I can get it on there.
One thing about business licenses, the reason that that came up also, is you have to see certain departments when you have business to make sure you're in compliance for your area and where you're at. I know that when I'm talking to Peters, right now we don't have any, what do I say, constraints on anybody renting out their place other than in Tullock. Apparently, people in Lake Tullock are being looked at for specific rentals. I did not even know that. So, by him seeing everybody, he could say, no, yay, you know, yes, you're good, you need one. Building caught a couple of people because they didn't have permits on their building that they were renting out, so we caught somebody there that was just going by that, again, didn't have it completely permitted, so.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking for the code, Mr. Chair, is I reviewed the code for business license requirements, and I didn't see that specifically addressed in that code, and maybe I'm looking at an old code.
I think Madam Clerk has found it, you want to have her read it?
Yeah, would be great.
So, when I look at, excuse me, 5.04.010, definitions, it says, A, for the purposes of this chapter, the following term shall be defined as follows. Board means Board of Supervisors. Business means pursuits, occupations, trade, profession, employment, or enterprise regularly engaged in or transacted, either exclusively or not, whether transacted in its entirety in the county or partially in the county. Business also means the soliciting of orders other than for goods to be delivered through interstate commerce and for the delivery of goods by vehicles owned or operated by seller. Fixed place of business means any establishment, store, office, or central place for carrying on regular activities. Nonprofit means any enterprise directed towards religious, scientific, social, literary, educational, recreational, benevolent, or purpose other than for pecuniary profit. Person and party mean person, party, firm, association, corporation, partnership, or profession for which a license must first be procured. Tax collector means the tax collector of the county. So, I guess, this is the definition, so I'm not sure if there's another place in here that's not that section, that it references that specifically?
Again, I didn't know what I needed to come to this informational meeting, so, I don't have it. I need to know what was gonna be talked about. Didn't know the code, I wasn't sure it was just about the letter I sent out.
So, there is, so I'm shooting in the dark here, so forgive me and stop me if this isn't what you are looking for. There is a section that's 5.04.030, license, separate required for each place of business. A separate license shall be obtained for each branch, establishment, or place of business in the county. If more than one business is operated from the same location by the same person, only one license is required.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry?
This was brought to my attention by numerous constituents up in District 3 by way of Next Door, and it became a very engaging topic of discussion. So, I did a little research myself, and I couldn't find, no offense, Ms. Sullivan, I couldn't find where it specifically addressed that. I did some further research, and I found out that there may be some case law on this in California down maybe 10 years ago, and I understand there was litigation on that, and the results was that certain requirements were actually stated if you issued a business license affecting ADA. So, I'm pretty much concerned about what's happening. If it's required as a license, I have no problem, but I think that if we have TOT people that are renting out their houses, and if they are actually doing that management themselves, or through a realtor, or through a property management company, I would question whether or not the owner of that house needs a business license.
That's the point.
That's why I'm unclear on it.
Okay.
I think I'd like to hear some, hear a little bit more about this.
Sure.
Second part of this, and once again, this is a result of the phone calls and things I received, was a form that was attached by the assessor.
No, no form was sent with it, other than our application.
May I read an email to you, ma'am?
That's an email, but what I sent was the letter with our application. I asked...
Was there any form attached to your application?
No.
Regarding the assessor's office?
No, on the business license, the assessor has to sign off.
Well, the reason I'm asking is, this is the information that was provided to me.
Yeah.
And there was an email, several of them, and several notations also, that stated that they wanted, that they were required to list their furnishings, or TVs, things of that sort, for the business license tax, and I went, wow, that's kind of unusual.
Now, that one, since you do have less...
And maybe, maybe the assessor can address those, too.
Yeah, 'cause I don't think it...
It has caused some concern in my district.
Yeah, did you actually see the paperwork?
I actually talked to folks that received it. I did actually see your letter, and...
Can you read your letter that you sent out?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Just so I, we all know.
Yeah, what it said...
I've never seen it, I've never seen it, so I...
Yeah, 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 not a problem. Our files indicate that your vacation rental business does not have a current Calaveras County business license. Chapter 5.04 of the Calaveras County Code states, every person conducting business in Calaveras, whether in whole or in part, except wholly within an incorporated municipality, Angels Camp, shall obtain a business license and pay an annual fee. I have enclosed an application for your convenience. Business license is approved for the physical location of the business it is based from. Please complete the application, obtain departmental approvals, which are required, and which we can inform you of, and return to our office for the payment with the fee. If the business, if the business is a sole proprietorship and the owner is an honorably discharged veteran, you may provide a copy of his or her DD 214. All application fees and subsequent renewal fees will be waived. If your business is nonprofit and can be provided in 501(c) or c3, all application fees and subsequent renewal fees will be waived. If you have any questions, please contact me at 754-6053.
And then to that, you attach the business license application?
Correct.
Okay.
And there was no form from the assessor's office regarding any inventory of equipment or anything like that?
No, that's not our department, so we wouldn't send out somebody else's form.
Okay. All right, well, like I said, that's the information that was presented to me.
Sure. Again, our business license in the code is very vague, so we may want to go forward and maybe stipulate what we call short-term rentals, and, you know what I mean? We could do that eventually in our code, once I updated, or something of that nature, we want to look at that. But right now, it's really pretty vague, you know what I mean? So, they do fit in that category.
Do you recall any phone calls you received regarding this issue, ma'am?
Oh, yeah, my staff got a few calls. We, I guess the response has been half and half. People come in and said, okay, not a problem, I didn't know, you know? And then the other ones are like, well, I've never had to do this, they're worried about tax implications, and I'm saying, well, we don't report the tax on that, I just need a business license.
Okay, it brought up some issues. Maybe we could have county council chime in on this when she has an opportunity to do some little research.
Sure.
That way we can deal. In the meantime, I'd like to hear from folks out there, and maybe discussion afterwards. Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I saw Rebecca, Rebecca, did you come in for the side of Rebecca?
Yeah. I just wanted to say, the county is in line with what other counties are doing in terms of requiring a business license for short-term vacation rentals. This is not some sort of obscure thing that only Calaveras is doing. You can Google business license on short-term vacation rentals, and you will find a slew of counties that have that information available on their website, and you'll also find from industry, industry websites for vacation rentals that it's something to be aware of as a, as a owner of a vacation rental, that it is a business because you have to report the income from the rental, and you are likely going to have to have a business license. So, I mean, you could literally just Google it, and you're going to get hours' worth of pleasurable reading if you want, but it is, it's not outside of what we're seeing being done in other counties, and it is determined to be a business activity.
Do you have any specific counties that we could contact?
San Luis Obispo.
San Luis Obispo.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else off the top of your head, ma'am?
Nah, I just kind of, but...
Santa Barbara, Half Boon Bay, Crescent City, Pacific Grove, Pismo Beach, that's just on the first page.
Yeah, so...
That'll give you a start, county council.
Again, I mean, I'm looking only at the legal issue, not the policy decision that an elected official or the board might make, so in terms, if the question is the legality or whether there's some case that disallows it, I'd be interested to see the case that you're referring to, Supervisor Olivera. I can certainly do enough research to figure out whether there's something illegal about doing it, and after that, it would be a policy call.
Okay, I'll forward that information that I have to you then.
Okay.
That's all I have at this time, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Mills?
I might note, I got on the Airbnb, Airbnb's incorporate its website, and it said, business licenses, many cities and counties require owners and operators to apply for and obtain a business license before the business can be operated. That's their first statement, right out of the box. So, it's just a matter of whether or not this county is going to require that as part of our policy.
Okay. Any other staff wish to speak to this item? Okay, public comments?
Good afternoon. Tim Uderthies, I'm speaking as an individual. And you are correct, Supervisor Olivera, this issue did come up about 10 years ago in Big Bear. There was litigation, the Pacific Legal Foundation was involved. The issue, or the unintended consequence of requiring, and I don't disagree with the business license aspect, but the unintended consequence of requiring that is that then those individual owners must meet ADA, and the building can't, building department can't waive that, so what will happen is the vast majority of your single-family dwelling vacation rentals, who, most will physically will not be even possible, let alone financially possible, to become compliant, will either go underground or stop renting. So, your stream that you're building up from your TOT revenue is going to start going in the other direction. We will get you, that we've asked for the legal information on the suit in Big Bear. The city was initially named in the suit, but because, they were let out of it because they never issued permits, business licenses, so...
Tim, I have a question. I didn't hear the first part of your statement. The first...
About the litigation or the unintended consequences?
Yeah, before, before that, you said that they would be required to, and I didn't hear what you said.
Okay, when you issue them the business license, then what happens is they have to be ADA compliant. What started the litigation in Big Bear was a renter calling up to a management company and saying, I want a rental that's ADA compliant. They informed them, they didn't exist. Called multiple agencies, and then filed suit. That, like I said, they spent $2.5 million, the Big Bear was released from the suit, and the plaintiff did in the end lose, but, I mean, we're trying to build up our TOT here, and if you put the business license requirement in there, then they got to be ADA compliant, and you will set the stage for litigation left and right on the outside.
Try and understand what you're saying.
Sure. Thank you.
Al, hang on.
Go ahead, Al. No, it's okay, go ahead.
She's better looking at me.
I'm also a taxpayer association, also a realtor. I, I think we ought to not go this route. It's a, it's really a violation of property rights. A person should be able to rent their home out by the month, year, or sell it. It's all part of the rights when you own property and what you do with it. You shouldn't have to go to government, or pay a fee, or be inspected, or even be shut down. It's just not the right thing to do, even though a lot of counties do it. We ought to be above that. When county council reviews this law, perhaps she can suggest wording to eliminate it.
Thank you.
Hi there. Thank you all for being here today. My name is Melinda Hoff, and I am speaking to you as the President-elect for Calaveras County Association of Realtors. I have not done a ton of research on this, but just in general, going over this and the Google searches you're talking about, I'm finding that more areas do a permit other than a licensing, because it does put the county in the middle of the mix. And, and as Tim was referring to with Big Bear, had the county issued a business license, the county would have been involved in that $2.5 million suit. Without the, the business license, you can go to a permitting process if you want to go there. But the main statement I want to make today is, before we go any farther with this, I think there is a whole lot at stake here, that the Board of Supervisors, county council, there's a lot of research, as, you know, an officer of the association, I need more information. I went to the county's website and tried to find in code where it states this. I've been a realtor in Calaveras County for 25 years. I've never had anyone have to get a permit for a vacation rental, and I live in the Copperopolis area. So, I just think that, don't, don't just throw this out there and start collecting money, there could be repercussions. Myself, as a realtor, we have people that buy property for 1031 exchanges. According to the tax code, real estate is an investment, it is not necessarily a business, so if you were to use it as a 1031 exchange, and then all of a sudden, your county's now required you a business license, it could throw you in a whole violation with the tax code with the IRS, and that's going to be costly. What if, what if we quit selling vacation homes in Calaveras County, where would we be? Because Copperopolis to Arnold, that, that's the mainstay here. So, those are just a few of the things. The ADA compliance, huge. These hillside properties can't become hills, you know, ADA compliant, so that would take a house off the rental market. It's just a whole can of worms, so I think before it goes forward, I think the intent was very good to thinking that, oh, a way to generate money, but there needs to be a whole lot of investigations and research done into this before it goes any farther, and I would really appreciate being kept in the mix on it as well. Thank you so much.
Hi, thank you guys for all being here today, and my name is Joan Irish. I am a Realtor, and I just want to, you know, ditto what they have said back here. These are some major issues that need to be looked into more before you guys make any forward movement on this. Personal property rights are very important to us, and we know the implications and things that can happen with 1031 exchanges and tax ramifications there that are possible, and we're very worried about this, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Honorable Members of the Board, Leslie Davis, County Assessor, I simply want to clarify for you, Supervisor Olivera, that at no time does the assessor's office request or require a list of what someone has in their home. We do request a lump sum amount of any business property that may be in, in a home that is being rented, but an item in this list is not requested or required.
Mr. Chair, question? Yeah, sure.
Ms. Davis, thank you. So, we actually request a lump sum estimation of equipment used for business under a business license application, is that correct?
For any business.
For any business?
That is correct.
Okay.
Any business...
What would that consist of in this?
Let me tell you.
Okay.
Any business equipment or rental unit furnishings, not including vehicles registered with DMV.
One more time.
Any equipment and/or rental unit furnishings, not including vehicles registered with DMV. So, when we have an agricultural operation, and someone has trucks on the property, but they also have movable equipment that is not registered with DMV, we're asking them for the total value of the movable equipment that is not registered with DMV.
So, if, just so I'm clear when I respond to my constituents, if we require a business license, you will be required to provide a lump sum value of the equipment used for that business license. Will that be taxed?
We request that information, yes, it is accessible. We also have the authority, but not the budget, to require any business owner to file a business property statement annually.
And would that equipment be things such as televisions, furnishings, bedding, beds, furniture?
In the event of a rental unit, like an Airbnb, it would be any furnishings and equipment necessary for that use of the property.
So, it would include that, that, those items I mentioned?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other public comments? Any other board comments or questions? No? All right, that was informational, so we will move on.
Mr. Chair? I want to make sure that we're covering this, this issue completely.
Well, it was an informational item, so...
I understand. I would like a poll of the board to indicate and provide direction to legal counsel to maybe look into this before we go any further and accept any practice, just to make sure we're on good ground here.
County Council, your lights on?
Yeah, I, I just want to clarify the limits of what I think the appropriate research is. I think the question is, is it legal to do it? Is that the, and is there a case out of the city of Big Bear that would prevent a, an elected official from making this decision? Because again, I'm not sure if this is a board decision, I know it's an informational item, I don't know if, if Ms. Sullivan is asking for this, for this research, so I'm a little bit confused about what my role is to this extent, but I'm happy to look at whether it's legal to do this. Is there anything else that either Ms. Sullivan or the board is asking?
It might be best to maybe do a little bit of research on that lawsuit that was brought up, and see what the parameters of it was, and what it entailed.
Sure. My first question with that is simply, is it a published case? It sounds like there was, the case maybe never concluded, and so, if it's, if it's a case with a citation that I can find in my legal database, then, then it would be precedential. If it's not, if it was never published in an appellate court, it wouldn't be binding precedent on anything we did here.
Okay. All right.
I'll accept it.
You want to pull the board, so I will pull the board on those issues. Supervisor Clapp?
What are we pulling on? Well, you wanted to pull the board, but I don't know where you're pulling from.
We'll pull the board on having county council look into those two matters, whether it's legal to ask for business license for these businesses, and to research a little bit on the lawsuit that was mentioned.
Are we asking for legal, for business licenses now?
Well, the notice was sent out by Barbara Sullivan.
Okay, I guess we are then. Yeah, I would like to have the information before I made a decision from county council's office.
Okay. Supervisor Mills?
Yes.
Supervisor Olivera?
Yes.
Karen Mendy?
Sure.
Ayes Abid?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
That was informational item, so, Madam Clerk, on to item number 24.
I need about two, three minutes to set up our...
We need to take a break. So, we need to set up PowerPoint. All right, we're back in session. Madam Clerk?
Item 24 is from the Administrative Office, to receive a report and presentation on the county space plan, and provide input to the county administrative office on the various proposed projects relating space utilization on the county campus.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and supervisors. Thanks for having me.
I was just going to do the quick little introduction piece. That's all right. I figured I'd introduce, I mean, I believe everybody had a chance to meet Mark, but just wanted to kick off that it's been a long road to get to this first point, and I know not without a lot of questions from board members as to, you know, when are we going to see it, what's the, what's the process? So, we, again, I have been working with Mark Dagenhart, who's here today to present the report findings, along with a number of his team members. Unfortunately, one of them had to leave, and thank you for the ones that could stay around where we had to wait until after lunch for this presentation. But I, I think when you look at the report and then add to it the memo that I wrote and produced with it to kind of lay some context about where we're at, where we're going, I hope that the board will find the information helpful and comprehensive, and provide somewhat of a, of an immediate path forward, and then also lay the groundwork for Phase 2, that after Mark has... And then also lay the groundwork for phase two, that after Mark has a chance to give his presentation and we go through questions, we can talk about if the board would like to discuss kind of what's next. So with that again, Mark, please.
Okay, thank you. So my company, CMG, is Communications Management Group, and the AIR stands for Asset Issues Resolution. So I'm a project manager. And within the projects that I manage, I hire experts and schmies, subject matter experts and such, as the project progresses and I find exactly what I need. And so that's how the members of my team are assembled, is by the needs of the project. And so the PowerPoint that we're going to see right now is at a fairly high level that is going over the 53-page report that you all have, and I believe we're emailed to you So here we go. So I'm the lead project manager. And so in beginning the background research and the data gathering, I met with all of the department heads, their number twos, their staff members. I met with all of the board of supervisors and, and others that are associated with any of the property and office space, either on campus or off campus. And so what we're going over right now is what we call phase one, which are the immediate needs and deficiencies. And then within the scope of work, it refers to phase two and phase three, which is a five-year and a 10-year. In this particular phase, we're just concerned with the immediate needs. So as this point heads up is that I was the one that met with all the supervisor heads and their staff and the board of supervisors. And then after meeting with those folks and then also the CAO consistently, then that's where I determined to bring on my other team members, which is an architect PM, Michelle Plotnik, and also a construction PM, which is Corey Fisk. The other members of my team were administrative assistants and those type of things that helped us put together presentations. Other consultants and interested parties, one in which, which was very helpful was Russ Thomas, who is here with us today. And because of his background and his construction knowledge, he was very integral. Then, of course, the sheriff and his captains helped us quite a bit and other members of the county. And on the 11th, as it states here, I made a presentation to all of the department heads. And that presentation is summarized in your report, which we'll get to here in a second. There we go. So the high priority facilities deficiencies, it's a mouthful. The, the top two were the district attorney's office and IT when we began the project. The district attorney is now housed in a 14-year-old modular. And the concerns there are the space, mainly the security, and being able to bring under one roof all of the activities and departments that she heads up. IT, you can read it here for yourself, of course. It just was inefficient space and inefficient, just, it's just not laid out well. There's, there's also some HVAC problems and comfort issues that need to be addressed. The board of supervisors, each one of these chambers are approximately 1,400 square foot. And as I was talking with CAO Lutz and others within the county, there's a lot of technology issues that could be upgraded. There are some grant monies out there that are available to do those very things, which I believe Brian Moss has done the research and, and such. And so there are some grant money funds out there. There was also some mention of changing the layout of your chambers and to make it more efficient and to have more available exits and along those lines. The rest of them, you can read the administration, the meeting rooms, lack of. The auditor's current space, you all have probably been there, but it's just long and broken up. And so there are walls and there's storage between. And so for those folks to communicate with each other, they've got to go out in the hall, go around an office and in and out. The juvenile probation services right now is housed in the Colombo building upstairs. But it really needs to be separated from the adult probation. And so that's why we were looking at the other side of the Colombo building, which the ag commissioner's in now. And so as we get into the presentation, you'll see that we did take a look at a number of other possibilities to move the ag commissioner. And then the sheriff spent some time with me talking about the need for servicing his vehicles. Right now, he has one vehicle bay that is given to him to use by the Public Works Department. And so now he has one mechanic, and so that mechanic has to walk between the two locations to shuffle the cars back and forth. And it's just really inefficient. And so the sheriff is looking to have a four-bay building constructed so that he can hire another mechanic and be able to have his other bays for oil changes and tires and those type of things, and then one for office and storage. Functions missing on campus. This was probably one of the bigger issues, along with the DA and the IT. And it's, it's about storage. Right now, campus-wide, department-wide, there's somewhere around 30 off-campus storage units being rented. And there's some information in the appendices on that, but it's about $12,000 a month. And so we're recommending, and just by noticing that it doesn't exist, and that's a consolidated, secure storage on campus for each department. Meeting rooms, break rooms, food service. I don't know that a food service, other than machines, would actually be practical because for an entrepreneur to actually bring a restaurant or fast foods or something like that on campus, I don't know that they would be able to have the ROI to be able to sustain it. But right now, there's, their, meeting rooms are at a premium, finding them is difficult. Break rooms, just to bring some more camaraderie to your staff, to where they can actually go somewhere and that's where they're having lunch and not have to leave. Security systems, it's, it's not necessarily a specialty. We, I, I didn't hire any schmies or any consultants along those lines, but the, it, it really came up when we started talking to the DA about their location. Many of the departments have completed their escape routes in case of fire or other catastrophes for their employees and have been practicing it. Others are working on them. Then the non-existent are not fully integrated throughout the facility is, is really what I'm talking about. But it seems like most of the department heads were headed in that direction and that there was some impetus by HR. Accessible facilities, we're really talking about the toilets here. A few of the doors with that, within the buildings aren't ADA-wide, but mainly the toilet rooms. And I understand that there is identified budget for doing those campus-wide. Victim services, that's part of the DA's operation, and they signed a three-year lease in what they call the MODs, the, the buildings down here that the hospital owns. And so they're in 1,500 square foot now with another 1,500 that they can grow into if it's needed. But they believe, the DA believes that having them all under one roof would be helpful. Potentially available space to utilize for the deficiencies that exist. Again, I'm going to let you read through it. I, I, I'm not one that believes in reading every word that I put on a PowerPoint. I'm happy to do it. The administration building has been an interesting aspect as far as what department to move. And as we progress here and as you dive more into your report, you'll see that it's really a, a situation of dominoes, if you will. Until we move one department, it's pretty tough for us to open up space to be able to move another department and to surge, if you will, without constructing a brand-new building to accommodate those efforts. Building B is the old jail and the sheriff's office. As you'll see in our recommendations when we get down to it, it just, the remediation cost is $97,000. And the salvation, not salvation, but the salvage value of all the different equipment and the different pieces within there is somewhere in the neighborhood of 150 to $300,000. And that's, that also comes up in the actual demolition of it and the exchange for the salvage for those different companies. But if that building is demolished, it's going to be a really nice, prepared pad site to build on, which is not going to require the extensive site preparation that other existing sites around here require, because they just haven't had buildings on them before. The utilities are in place. Buildings R, S, and T, those are the new courthouse and the sheriff's offices and the jail. And myself and CAO Lutz and the sheriff and, and a number of others have been through those buildings. I, I haven't actually walked the courthouse, but I did get a floor plan of it. And the sheriff's office is not something that is, that has extra room that we can utilize for any department. And the courthouse, because it's owned by the state, there are some challenges there that we've been unable to overcome. The RCD building, which is the old CCWD, we spent a lot of hours on that building. And it's also in your report. We did put together a master plan, a 10-year master plan on that, on just the expenses that it would take to initially get it ready to go and then to maintain it over that 10-year period, including life cycles for the big equipment such as HVAC and the walls and the ongoing maintenance and those type of things. Corey Fisk, our construction project manager, did an excellent job there, and you'll find it in your, in your report, and I'll be happy to go over it with you. Building G, which is presently the district attorney's office, is approximately 2,850 foot. And I went over that a little earlier. Building E, which is the IT space that we're referring to at 2,100 square foot, is on the bottom floor, back towards the back of Environmental Services. So general recommendations, salvage retention and disposal. There, we're, we're talking about a lot of different items that are on campus. I mean, anywhere from old desks that Pat Martin's not going to be able to reuse to old equipment that's setting out in the Public Works. And the sheriff's department and the DA's also has other storage for property that they've seized and that they need and now is no longer needed. But this is just a suggestion to, on an annual basis, be able to inventory it, know what it is, and see if it makes sense to possibly invite folks for a garage sale. It would really help clean up a lot of things around here, campus-wide, and give you a more view of the open space. Evaluate off-campus properties. Those are the properties that we're currently leasing. And then CAO Lutz and I, you know, I was asked to dive into talking to a number of different realtors and investigating other real estate that could be leased around the city of San Andreas, which I did. And not a lot out there with, with, with space. The Calaveras Title Company, the old building down at the bottom of the hill on the right, two stories, it's a nice building. It's available, but ADA is another problem there with the toilets and the, and the hallways and those type of things and getting to the downstairs, even though there is access from the back. Document management system, I understand from talking to you all and from talking to Ed Short and, and also Stan Moore of your IT, that you're in the process of organizing this on a couple of different tracks. But once we get the document management system rolling and we start scanning and getting rid of hard copies, then that'll clear up some of the storage issues that we have. The shared storage facility, I've gone over that. That's the shared secured storage facility that, that, that we recommend. Eliminate barriers to access. That has a lot to do with the ADA toilets, the hallways, some of the doors, those type of things. Security and safety. Again, we didn't focus on this as a specialty, but it is, it is something that, that should be on y'all's list, department by department. Again, I could dive into it, but you know, not, not with much knowledge. Evaluate and replace, ma'am? You can stop me anytime.
Oh, that's fine.
Ask any questions you'd like. The evaluate and replace, you know, has to do with a lot of different pieces of equipment and furniture and locations. It's a pretty broad statement, which we dive into a little bit more here in the report. Now, this, this has to do with the actual buildings themselves, as they exist on campus and off-campus. When you go to GIS and you ask them, give me a floor plan for this building, they don't really have it, other than what they've scanned into PDF. And with a PDF file, you can't manipulate it, you can't change it as an architect and make easy changes and really dive into it. So this is just something that we're recommending and went from talking to Stan and, and the guys at GIS, it sounds like they're headed in that direction. Master spec system, you know, the calling out specs on your buildings from everything from doorknobs to doorstops to windows to trim to whatever it may be, building a master spec book so that you have consistency amongst all of your buildings with every piece that could be replaced or added. Pre-approved contractor list. I understand that Bonnie, your purchasing person, is working on that, and so is the CAO Lutz and, and the other folks, and they're making some progress. But this one would help a lot. Policies and template agreements goes somewhat hand-in-hand with the pre-approved contractor list, has to do with purchase orders and just being able to standardize it so that you're able to hand those documents out to the potential bidders, contractors, other people that may work for the county. So the highest priority recommendations. So the old jail and sheriff's office are relatively close to the toxic material shed right now that's across the street from Public Works and right next to HR. It just needs to be remediated when, when the jail's remediated. Does it need to be demolished? Yes. Do you all want to replace that particular small shed with a Butler building of some sort to store agricultural toxic materials that you still utilize? Quite possibly. I don't know that the pad itself is, is adjacent enough to the old jail and sheriff's office facilities for it to be in conjunction to any future building. But we put them together because of the remediation side of it. And they both need to be torn down, hauled out. Design and construct a new district attorney office. And we're recommending the old jail site, just because in your report, you'll see that what we did for building a new, a new district attorney office on a 10,000-square-foot basis. And the way that we did it is so that you can expand that to a 15 or to a 20 or down, pretty simply with the numbers. It was done so that it broke out any site preparation that needs to be done, which if we were to consider a location up next to the new courthouse on the left when you're facing it, just behind Animal Services, it would, it, that particular site would encompass us needing to relocate Animal Services, but would also, the site preparation would be extensive. And, and I had Captain Ed Ballard assist myself and Corey Fisk, my construction project manager. And then, of course, Michelle Plotnik was involved in the overall estimates. But Ed, because he was so involved with the jail and with the sheriff's office, he really knows about that rock up there and, and what it would take. So on the old jail site, you've got your utilities, puts it here on campus with the other buildings. I think it really would instill a lot of excitement and confidence among your staff also to really see some things happening. And then, as we dive into it, the consideration for alternatives for the district attorney's interim housing requirements. We cover it pretty extensively here in the report. So the district attorney could, we could redo the administration building here, which, again, we've got some layouts and, and other things here, to where they would basically take the east portion of this building and one of the chambers, which would be this one if we constructed the new chamber next door. The other alternative is for you all to, to commit on building the new site and the new, you know, the new office, and for us to do some improvements on the modular that they're in now. they're in now and to remain there. But those discussions and decisions are up to y'all and the district attorney and your process and procedures. But this would be our recommendation is to design and construct a new district attorney office building. And we've done a lot of research on different sites, which is also in the report. Second priority recommendations. So we're recommending whether we utilize the east portion of the admin building for the district office, for the district attorney's interim offices or not, that we create your new board chamber, chambers so that you can get your dais the way that you want it, you can get your technology the way that you want it, you can possibly fit in some more seating for your guests that are attending. It could be that, well, you'd be able to utilize this and as you build this one out and when it's ready, then you would move. And there's been a lot of talk of possibly putting partitions up here on this wall so that you'd be able to open up into this room when you have higher-capacity crowds. It could also be closed off and used for other meetings and those type of things. And again, there is some grant money out there. In conjunction with this, we create some, some offices. As I've talked to the different supervisors, some really don't care for an office, others would like to be able to have drop-ins, share some. So we're thinking that create some offices, maybe three of them or four to share and drop in and out, and then a meeting space for y'all to meet, for you to have constituents to come in and have a private meeting area. That's what we're recommending here. And then reconfiguring the auditor space, we're not necessarily suggesting that the auditor needs to move out of her space and move into the admin building or such, but it's broken up enough right now that it's just really not efficient for the department, per my conversations with the department head and the others within the department. And, and there has been some talk about HR taking over payroll and some other things which would move that out. And when I had my meeting with Judy Hawkins, I believe, she has the space in her building and is ready to, to do that. And this use of unoccupied space in the admin building. Couple of different options. You know, we talked about relocating IT here. There was some resistance from other, from, from some that I've talked to, just because IT is really not a public-facing department, but that's a possibility. And then we have the options, the advantages and the disadvantages, pretty self-explanatory. And then another option that came up towards the end of, of the preparation of these reports was the possibility of human resources to relocate to the administrative space. Because it's, in my interviews, the human resources interacts a lot with the administration and also the auditor's office interacts a lot with administration, as opposed to many of the other departments. So the proximity for either one of those two departments in the admin building would, we believe, would be a logical move. So in conclusion. As I stated earlier, we did a lot of research, a number of the board members came with this. We looked at the old jail, the sheriff's office. We had a meeting with NALL, which is the National Analytics Laboratory, that did the analyzation of remediation that was required within the jail and the old sheriff's office. And that total cost is $97,000 for just a remediation. So it's not some terribly ridiculous number. And it sounds like to me that with the salvage within the old jail and sheriff's office that remediation and the demolition could almost be a wash. So if you approve the construction of the new district attorney's office building, potential interim solutions while DA is being constructed is somewhat what I talked about a little earlier. And as you'll see in your report, there are some drawings that were done by our architect PM that lay out how this 3,500-square-foot would be accomplished on the east side of this admin building for the DA. And if she was to stay in her existing building, then there would be some minor upgrades we need to make. Again, we covered it, but that shared secured storage facility. And this could be, this could be relatively straightforward, simple, but still sophisticated in that each department would have their own locking door. It would be monitored and, and there would be computerization so that they'd be able to search what they actually have there from their office. It takes some integration, but it's pretty straightforward on storage. When we talk about the alterations to administrative building and relocate DA and interim basis, the alterations to the admin building, of course, would be not building walls and not building new offices for the district attorney. As we've met with her, cubicles are fine. She's not interested in spending money to create private offices within the existing space. The space would be designed so it could be utilized in the future by other departments. The main thing that, that we would accomplish here would be to get her out of the old space, of course, but to create a secure environment for them, to where they would have a secure lobby and to where it would be not simple, but for the investigator that they have on staff that carries a gun, he's also there for security of the district attorney's staff and the office. And so having it all on one floor and sectioned off with the proper lobby entrance and exit would create the security that they would need on a temporary basis here. And it designed properly, the space would be able to easily migrate into another department's So that's the PowerPoint. And as I say, it's relatively high level. The report goes a little deeper, well, quite a bit deeper, actually. And I'm happy to answer any questions and take you through the report.
Thank you, Mark. I would just add also to Mr. Degenhart's report is the attached memo that was also with the board item. And I think that's, that's relevant too because I tried to put it through a lens of available capital improvement funds that we have and overlaid with priorities and discussions that I'd had with various departments and, and the space plan. And I think that's relevant because obviously cost is a big consideration. We have a number of, of funds that are available that can help to, to make this possible. One is the judicial construction fund that we are in negotiations with the courts that we would be able to use, you know, a portion of to help fund this project. Our TEATER fund is also a use, as are the certificates of participation from 2007, and a little money left over on the general obligation bond that specifically needs to be used for up at the jail sheriff administration project. Ultimately, what I think, and when I laid out what we could afford, that still leaves us with enough reserve on, on TEATER to feel comfortable and meeting our, our biggest needs was moving forward with the jail, old jail demolition and remediation. Our roofing project obviously is critical, as are the ADA upgrades that Mr. Degenhart mentioned. And building the district attorney building, which, when you look at my memo, was pieced together based on some things are allowable for the COP, some things are not. Same with the judicial construction fund, there's just not enough there, per se, which is then being shored up with recommendation to use some of the TEATER funds. Again, just based on what's available and what the appropriate uses are for some of those funds. And then a, using the general obligation bond to build a parking lot at the sheriff administration area that was not completed during initial construction. We also would have funds to be able to reconfigure the auditor's office and information technology to make their space manageable. I think a big question mark, and it's laid out there on the options, is the option A, B, and C. Who do we put here in administration? I, my feeling is, you know, but in looking at the options, we, I would recommend either relocating human resources here or constructing a, expanding OES to include having an EOC here, where right now, we're in the sheriff's office and access is really challenging with that and it's, it's less than ideal for how, how we're laid out. I have had a conversation with HR. I think there's mixed feelings on putting HR here. And I know Judy Hawkins is here and I want to fully represent kind of the, the discussions. I think the concern from staff being, county staff feeling comfortable to come to HR if they have concerns and having concerns about walking into county administration to do that. I feel that having them on that side with their own entrance kind of remediates some of that and they, you know, would still have their own separate exit and the back door that staff could leave. I, I see the benefit in terms of better collaboration, communication with HR and admin. With having a large conference room here, it would let them do trainings, it would let them do new employee orientation without having to go up to the library or over to HHSA. So I, I think there's a lot of benefits to having them here, but I also want to acknowledge that there are some concerns that, that they had. And then EOC, obviously, the downside being we use up that space for an administration program that I think, while a critical, I also understand that the challenge is in using it just for that purpose. So what we would be looking for today really is, one, the board's consent on yes, move forward with the jail demolition, in which case it would still come back to the board for final approval of any bid that, that went out or the RFP. We obviously would then want, you know, opinion on the district attorney building the building. If that's what the board would like, then we will proceed with that. The decision points then being, do we leave the DA where they're at? My recommendation is to do so for cost savings, but I also recognize some of the, the concerns with the district attorney. And then the third be, or the fourth being that option A or C, who ultimately gets located
Well, it's very interesting on the, the HR aspect of it because I'm looking around here and I'm not sure. Russ was here, I think, at one time. Admin was over where Judy is and HR was here, so, in the back over here. So very interesting on that part of it. Kind of done full circle maybe here. Is there any board questions? Mr. Olivera, your light is on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Question for District Attorney York. Could I have you address the podium, please?
I came over just in case.
I noticed.
Instead of listening from my office.
Ah, I appreciate that. Michelle, how is our evidence storage proceeding? Can you just give us about a 10-second synopsis of what happens to evidence as it reaches various stages? Example, field deputies, they'll go ahead and book and log evidence in, it's stored in the sheriff's facility. When court trial comes, that evidence is removed, presented in court. What happens to it afterwards?
It is given to us. The court does not store evidence, so it's a constant tension of where we're going to put it. We are very fortunate that we have such a good working relationship with the sheriff's office. They tend to store most of our evidence for free. That includes CHP evidence. Our CH, local CHP office has a very limited capacity to store evidence. Once we file a case, it's ours, so that includes vehicles. We just had a $6,000 bill we had to pay for a vehicle in a case because the sheriff's office didn't have room to store it for us for free. So, you know, I, I've said it before, my office does what we can to be cheap. We take whatever help we can get. That includes whatever free services we can get from our partners in the criminal justice system. So Angels Camp, Police Department, and the sheriff's office have been very good to us over the years in storing whatever they can for us for free. They cannot accommodate us all the time. In fact, just before I came over, we have an issue with a case with a piece of evidence that sheriff's office does not have room for and we have to figure out what to do with my staff, do with it. My staff is currently working on that and it's going to cost, hopefully not very much because, like I said, we're, we're cheap and we don't have a huge budget for such things. But we have to pay for it. The court, as I said, does not keep evidence. We have to take it back and I'm not going to tell you where we store our evidence, but we, we find places to, to secrete it and we call in favors. That's what we do. So looking ahead, for us to have our own building, having the capacity to have sufficient evidence storage, so we don't have to inconvenience other offices or rely on favors or pay for it, would be something that I would consider one of our high priorities. With the ability to store evidence comes the necessity to be able to process it and view it. When we have defense attorneys come in or someone who wants to view evidence, you've got to have a place to take it out, unpackage it, have them look at it, take photo or whatever it needs to happen, instead of, you know, oh, well, yeah, we got it in storage, but we can't show it to you. It's, it's a whole big picture project if we're going to have the storage, we need to have the other parts of it.
Thank you. One more quick question.
Sure.
In the, in the incidence of convictions, does the county need to retain that evidence or do the court systems do that? And how long do they have to hold it?
Right. So the court does not store evidence. They make, we take it back and we have to store it until the appeals process is done. That can take years. So we have to maintain it, we have to contain it in a secure facility. We have some things, depending on what type of case, we have to keep it until the defendant passes away. Some things we have to keep for a minimum of 75 years. It depends on the type of case.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes, thank you. That's okay, Barbara. I needed to talk to somebody else.
Okay. That's fine. I just want to listen. I do have some other comments, so hopefully I'll have that opportunity.
Obviously, he doesn't know who you are.
Go away. Ms. Callen, I do have a question. And that is, could you clarify on A-87 costs for those square footage of buildings that we currently don't use annually? Are those still billable on A-87?
On, it depends on what we're using it for. So a lot of times, the, the square footage that we're not using in terms of there's nobody there, we are using it for purposes of storage.
So?
So, yes.
We are getting a recovery?
We do try to get as much recovery as we can in whatever capacity that we can. There was a, a change when the jail was moved, so part of the square footage had to be kind of reallocated and it, it ended up getting reallocated to non-allowable square footage.
So in the case of the old jail, we're not really recovering anything?
No.
Thank you.
No.
Do you think maybe your office would be better suited to being here in the admin building?
Tim and I have discussed that. I'm here in this building a lot and his staff are over in my building a lot. And so there, there are times of the year, for sure, where it would probably be more convenient. You know, we're, but the other thing is from everyone else who's using my department, it's more convenient for the, me to be near the tax collector and the assessor. It just depends on what that, what that work is that's being done.
If I could add to that piece too, I think, because we did talk quite a bit about that and, and batted that around with the space plan team. I think the other hard part was then, going back to that Domino series, if you put the auditor here, trying to find what goes into her spot. We couldn't really put HR there and it's not really the size for IT necessarily, so it was kind of that, that challenge of what do we then do with that space?
Yeah. But I will say, and, and I think all of you have been to my office, so you can probably sympathize with us, but I have never had a member of the public come to my office that has not said, "Are they punishing you? It's not a good space." It's, it's, we can laugh about it. But it, it is... But it is, it's, it's, it's not a good space. It's very broken up. It's, you know, and we do the best that we can. It's, it's better than it was when half my staff was upstairs and half my staff was downstairs, but we're still extremely spread out and we're still analyzing the concept of, you know, payroll potentially moving over to HR. I think the issue at this point that I'm running into is there would be some significant internal control problems that I can't quite swallow. Internal control problems. But we're looking at, you know, would some onboarding processes, changes fix that? Or would some document management changes with some workflow and various security change that? But at this point, that's, that's an issue that I'm not quite ready to make that leap. So we're looking for a way that my staff can be in one, one office where there is just a better flow. We had an issue a couple of years ago that we couldn't get emergency personnel into my office to get an employee out. It's, that's extremely unfortunate when that's the position that we're put in, that I can't, you know, I can't get ambulatory services and help a staff person. And that's how my office is configured, so that's not an ideal situation. And just having everything just broken apart means, you know, I do have to have my payroll manager come, leave his office to come down to my office. I do have to have my property tax manager leave her office to come down to my office as opposed to us having a more, I guess, efficient ability to work with each other and an efficient use of space. We have, from a square footage perspective, a lot of space for the auditor controller. We just can't use it.
I can recall when that was the building department and your office was my dad's plan checking area.
Mm-hmm. And one of my old offices was my mother's office back in the late 70s, yeah.
Small world.
Dennis, if I could just...
Yeah, go ahead.
...your quick question. Why doesn't IT fit in your office? Why wouldn't IT fit in that office? Follow Dennis' line.
I don't know.
I think Mark just raised his hand.
Oh, yeah, you can take it if you'd like. So, IT, the staff and also department head, Stan Moore, want a more open space, more of a square space, if you will, to where their desks are these mobile stand-up type desks where they can stand up, they can sit down, they can add different computers to it and be able to work on multiple items. And there are no walls involved, is what they envision. And so when you put them into a long, narrow space like that and you've got one programmer down here and you've got a business analyst down here, they're going to have the same problems that the auditor does. You've got to go out in the hallway and walk down here to see them. And what IT wants is a nice, open space where everybody can see one another and talk to one another openly and freely.
I would add to it though, too, there, staffing-wise, actual FTEs, there are more FTEs with IT. The issue we have right now is we have IT in their space that could be configured differently to house more people, but then you also have IT upstairs next to building, you have IT down the hall here, you have IT over at HHSA where we're trying to create better collaboration across the IT functions and to do that is trying to get them together. As they've grown and it's natural, IT is one of those areas that is, we're more dependent upon technology for all of our processes. That's the, you know, one of those areas that we do see some growth in and trying to make sure that we can start to look at a plan for them so that they can collaboratively work together with all their different functions are important.
If you want to continue in that line, please go ahead.
So, IT would prefer to be in the DA's former modulars, as we put in this report, rather than be in the controller's office?
It is more open. It's, yeah.
And then plus, a controller's office is a limited square footage. So for IT to grow and to add full-time employees would be very difficult there as compared to the spacer in now and compared to...
I've just, I've just been listening to our district attorney talk about the quality of those buildings for a while, so if somebody wants it, okay, that's...
Well, you know, my construction PM has taken a really close look at the building and there are some improvements, but once all that weight is taken off of the center of the floor of the files and a number of other issues...
Are they replaced with servers? Are those lighter?
No, servers would remain where they're currently are. It's way too expensive to relocate servers.
Yeah, your data's...
Oh, my gosh. No, it's quite right.
Yeah, you know, as long as there's an Ethernet connection, they're good to go. And then plus, you've got your fiber running around your ring.
The other thing I would like to...
You know of IT. You heard your name? Your ears are ringing? Come on up and join me. No, I'm sorry. We're talking about your willingness to take the DA's office over.
Oh, gee.
Yeah, I was meaning to talk to you about that.
If you weren't listening, Stan, it was a question of couldn't, could IT fit in the auditor's current space?
Yes, I did hear.
For, okay.
Hi, Sam Moore from IT. Good afternoon. And so certainly understand the question. The, the way that the IT staff works on an ongoing basis, there's a lot of collaboration that goes on. So each one of the, of the technicians, they have space for, for their desk. They also have space typically behind, that is for building out equipment, testing it and checking it. So they have a fair amount of space per individual. While they're working on their own tasks, there will be questions that will come up where the team is working in a collaborative fashion. So as was pointed out, the way that we have the rooms set up right now, and we would invite anyone over who would like to take a look at it, we'd love to give you a tour, there is a, there's an area in the middle that they can all get together and, and discuss problems that are going on, solutions. And it does take place in that collaborative fashion. The workspace in the auditor's office is long and narrow and, and is set up in a way that can work for, for a group of cubicles. I absolutely understand what the auditor is talking about in terms of the challenges that that presents. I think it presents it for, for her department. I think it's going to present it to, for IT or any other department that would be using it. So our, our area, the best way that we get productivity is, is with that more of a square area that does have that, that room where everyone can collaborate when needed.
How does atmospheric conditions affect the IT operations? If you would move into the DA space, is the environment conducive to your servers and your computers?
We really don't have that many servers in the IT area. They're scattered throughout the campus. There's some equipment, but, but it's, it's not like we would be moving the server room to that, to that area.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
Supervisor Mills, your light on?
Yeah, this isn't so much for you, Stan.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stan.
Here you go again, right? I would like to, if we're going to have any consideration of using money from the TETER fund, especially knowing that we would use it for an upfront cost, to possibly consider borrowing against the TETER fund and providing an interest rate of return on that so that it can be amortized over a period of time rather than taking it out right upfront. So I guess, Rebecca, I'm asking your opinion on that thought.
Well, for the most part, anytime, and Tim and I have talked about this as well, when, when the board approves a budget using TETER, we do not just transfer TETER funds over to wherever and let them sit there. We wait until the expenditure occurs and then we'll draw those funds from there. We have talked about a potential change in that process because the CIP budget or the construction and progress budget is its own fund. And the issue that we run into every single year in the CIP fund is, is you approve a capital project in budget year one and maybe it gets started, maybe it doesn't. Well, if it's not rebudgeted the following year, then it's not approved anymore. So, and the funding is still sitting over in the TETER fund. That money is still sitting there. So we've talked about the potential of tightening up the requirement of what constitutes an actual construction in progress project and budgeting that and then moving that funding source, if it's not restricted, so TETER, moving that portion. So let's say it's a, we'll say it's my office and so it's the auditor's remodel for $100,000. We would move, because I think 50 of it was from TETER and 50 was from COP, so we would move the 50 to CIP. The 50 for certificates of participation would actually have to stay under certificates of participation until those expenses actually occur. But at least we don't lose that 50 that's earmarked and then it would continue to be rebudgeted until it's closed out. So that's a coordination that the administrative office and my office have to have, but it would be a way for us to make sure that we're earmarking, and you've heard me talk about this before, we need to have a plan for TETER. It's, it, to have to just keep every year saying, "We're going to do something with it," is not beneficial. And we can still internally borrow even against the CIP fund. So even if we moved, you know, $1 million or $2 million or whatever it is from the TETER fund over to the CIP fund, that's still on the table for us to internally borrow for purposes of cash flow.
My goal though would be, as sensitive as capital, to try to amortize over a longer period of time. In other words, don't, don't take this as a one-time hit, but to try to spread out that cost over a period of time. So in essence, you're getting some recovery off of A-87 or some, in other ways, recovering some of the money.
Well, we can't, so capital is not included in A-87.
No, I noticed.
So until it's a completed, a completed...
Project.
Project of a property, we can't include it in that internal cost allocation plan. And I guess my issue would be if we have $100,000 of expenses, then we have $100,000 of payments that we're making to a contractor. There really is no way to amortize that. We have to pay the contractor $100,000. So you either take the $100,000, 50 out of TETER and 50 out of COP at the point when those expenditures occur because, or you have the general fund float it if you're worried about amortizing against a TETER. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, I understand.
So, you know, to me, there, you know, internally, there really is no, there, you know, if it was a, I guess, a department to department, like a one fund to another fund, where we're talking about doing some sort of internal loan process that's going to be paid for with some future revenue source, then yes, we could probably come up with some sort of internal loan that would have some sort of amortization period that would coincide with that future revenue allocation. But a lot of this stuff, because it is one-time funding and you're going to have that outflow of expenditure to those outside respective contractors, there's not, there's not always going to be a way to do that.
Okay. I just wanted to get that discussion out there because I think if we can be sure that the options are discussed, at least we know what we've got in front of us. Thank you.
Supervisor Gieramendi?
Thank you very much. This was a lot of work. Appreciate it. You know, I, of course, would love to see the giant universal solution, but I think having read through all the parts and talked to CAO, I think we've got progress and that's probably more important at this point than absolute perfection. So I'm glad we're privileging that for more P-words. I had a couple of quick questions. I asked the earlier one, but it seems like storage is the, seems to be a consistent theme. So it would seem to me that moving that maybe to the priority list and sorting out how that would work may be a good idea. I mean, I know that it's, I think we came up with $11,000 a month we're paying out on that roughly. I'm sure that doesn't, I mean, there's no way you could find every nook and cranny that we're leasing, I'm guessing, at some level.
Well, we got pretty close.
But I, I think that maybe one of the things we had to consider is that storage facility. You know, obviously, there's going to be certain concerns. Some departments can't use it. Maybe it's not appropriate for the DA to have the same entrance as everybody else to recover their stuff. And also really take on some of the issues around our archives, you know, taking some pressure off of that building, you know, taking on a comprehensive, you know, if we had a little bit of money for the archives, we could better store things. We talk about the, our space allocation and a new DA building and the county courthouse are the ways that we can move our civil grand jury into perhaps a more adequate location. And sort of take into, those parts are all related to storage.
I've heard the same. And I agree.
Yeah, so maybe we could, maybe we can move that up into more of priority or at least planning. It sounds like we've got two things in front of us. Where do we go right now and then what's interim and what's a long term? I guess that makes three things.
I'd, I'd say put the secured storage right up there at the top with the other two items, DA and IT. I mean, it's very important. I haven't talked to a department head yet that couldn't use it. In the DA's case, you know, they have two containers that they use, so they're not paying anything on a monthly basis and those containers are relatively close to their location. Then they have other storage also, but those containers are things, are, contain important documents that they need access to quickly.
Well, that's, maybe that's something we can explore further, figure out how to do that. I mean, we're talking about a small mini storage place, for lack of a better term.
That we own and that we operate and is on the campus.
Right. And I'd like to take on the archives and our other records. I mean, we've got some of the best preserved survey records in the state and they're not climate protected and we got, we got real treasures in this county we need to protect.
Well, and from talking to Ed Short when I met with him and also Peter, if we were able to get GIS out of that spot that they're in now on the same floors building and free up that space, then that's going to give Ed more room to begin scanning these land documents that you're talking about and be able to move forward more quickly with his software program that has been discussed. And GIS is what CAO Lutz was referring to as far as IT being upstairs.
I'd like to, I'd like to ferret out a little bit more information about these two rooms, the old court rooms and the board chambers here and sort of how that would work and how it interacts with the EOC. Is EOC compatible with HR being over here? What are, sort of how would this all come together and work?
I heard two questions in there.
Yeah, I did too.
So how it would, how it would work under what options would in part depend on if the board chose HR here or if we did just OES here? And knowing a question you would have for me...
First, I think you're right.
Yeah, the, a question that you would have for me was conceivably, could we do both and? Put HR where we had anticipated, make that the conference room that also functions as the EOC if there was an emergency? And, and thinking about him, and again, it's, it does, it certainly is a possibility. There might be a little more cost in terms of we budget for one. There's a lot of technology that goes into the EOC, particularly with just extra cabling, more having mounted television, bringing in independent phone lines, things like that. But it certainly is possible. It just means that if that were a booked room, if there's an emergency, obviously, whoever it is isn't going to get it for a month or so because we'll need it.
Yeah, we'll need it for operations, yeah.
I would imagine that would just be the way it was. And it seems to me having the EOC close by, not at the airport, not at the sheriff's, I mean, we've got the controller's office right here, HR, all our functions are here. And I don't want, but I don't want it up like Oroville either and suddenly with the dam goes, they've got to evacuate their EOC.
They're gone too, yeah.
Yeah. So because I was involved in the EOC and the GFO and the AFO during Buick Fire, just a fire... just to kind of put it in perspective for those of you that, you know, were there or saw it or didn't, um, we didn't have access to the EOC once it was closed on September 25th was the last day of the operating EOC, but we still had to continue. So, what we ended up doing was actually running the Calaveras Title Building. Um, and that was the joint field office. And so, that is where we had to go. That's where we had, um, you know, a three or four-hour meeting every single morning. Public Works was down there, my office was down there, uh, HR came down there, administration, Cal Fire, uh, members of the Sheriff's Department, um, you know, you name it, we were down there. Um, and it was a, it, it, it worked for purposes of the space, um, but it was really hard during that period of time because we had to go off campus. And we still had things that we needed to do. So, ideally, if we could have that in a more centralized area, um, the, the conference area is, uh, you, you, I don't know, uh, Supervisor Olivera, did you, did you ever go into the Calaveras Title, JFO, when it was down there?
No.
Okay. It's, um...
I know where to keep out of.
Okay. Well, it, it probably was about this, the, the one room that we mainly met in was probably a little bit smaller than, than this area. And so, um, we just stuck tables in there and we sat around it. And then there were kind of other offices that were being used by, um, public information officers. Um, and then we had also, you know, when you're in an emergency like that, you're also making availability to outside agencies for mutual aid. We had people coming up from San Joaquin County, from other OES departments, um, that were also there to, to help us. And so, it's kind of that all hands on deck kind of, uh, approach when you're in an emergency like that, but you just wanna make sure that you have enough room for that worst-case scenario and that it is somewhat in a centralized area because it is pulling from every single department that you have.
And I noticed that Michelle just walked in as well, if you wanted to have any of her feedback on...
So, what that proposal would look like is we take that room next door, have a divider there, we have much-needed conference room space since we all know everybody's fighting over any table that can fit more than four people. And then upgrade the technology in there. So, if there is a disaster, we pull back the divider and that's the act, center of the action. Is that correct?
That is. There were kind of two main models for, I'm sorry?
Can I respond to that briefly?
Sure, I'm sorry.
I think there's just a little confusion because we have these two existing courtrooms that we sort of now are calling boardrooms. But the proposal is really to recreate a new boardroom for the Board of Supervisors next door.
It doesn't have to be.
Because you can't update this one while you're using it.
But it's, for clarity, though, it doesn't have to be. That's if the board wants to renovate. If the board says we don't wanna incur the expense, we can renovate that to be the conference room.
You could, but it wouldn't make sense. I, I mean, just from a sequential perspective, it would make sense to do what you need to create the boardroom that you really need over there. When that's complete, take this room and then create the sort of flexible meeting space that could be used by EOC. That room has some, we have some issues here. It's not accessible. You don't have really great security. You don't really have all the tech that you really need. So, it just kind of makes sense to move over to the new room and then do the changes here. This is also then adjacent to the rest of the available space in the admin building that could be used for whichever department ends up being here, um, also for flexible meeting space and for supervisors' meeting space. So, by consolidating it at this end, we kinda keep you guys down there and keep all of this closer together. So, just a, just a thought. And yes, it's a hunk of money all at once.
Go ahead.
I've got a couple of questions that I think the, uh, the CAO possibly you could answer. I'm wondering, and probably Rebecca might wanna chime in on this, um, I'm going back to your presentation and what I read in the narrative and the, what was given to us on our board packet. And under the list of high priority facility deficiencies, it says a vehicle service facility for the sheriff's vehicles. Yet, what's being recommended of the two hundred thousand we have in the GOB is to put in a parking lot. Is there a reason why we're not addressing their immediate needs with that funding and maybe looking at some type of facility for them that they need for that amount of money versus a parking lot?
I think the, the main reason I, and Mark can jump in there too, but I think part of this would be around this pad where the parking lot would be at.
Well, you know, the sheriff has the space picked out in his mind where he'd like to see these four bays, which is you're driving in to go to the back parking lot that's immediately there on your right. But he's open. But the parking lot that they're talking about completing right now is something that, as they all say, they should've done when they built the Chejos to make that parking lot bigger because if you go back there right now, the parking needs that they have for their staff are exhausted and the parking needs that they have for their vehicles that aren't in use, the sheriff's vehicles themselves is maxed out also. And so, I was under the assumption that the parking, uh, expansion was already underway and approved, so to speak. But, um, I, I really wasn't involved with the parking lot expansion.
The, and I guess the next piece being, I think the cost to build out four bays based on what the sheriff is looking at would be more than what's available. But the larger issue is they're also requesting some recurring costs, which would be additional staff, people, mechanics to be working on the vehicles up there. So, certainly, if the board would like us to go back and, and map out what that would look like cost-wise and, um, both upfront and then ongoing costs, we can do that.
Well, I, I'm not certainly opposed to his, his idea of four bays, but right now he has one and he's walking, employees walking back and forth. We're walking all the way over to get a car, bring it, send it back, walk back and so forth, and we've only got one bay. If we could look at giving him two bays at his facility and, 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 and keep the same staffing level or even one, whatever, whatever it comes out to be, I'm, I'm sure within the two hundred thousand dollars or even a little bit more, we might be able to accommodate that and it would be more efficient than what we're doing now. And it would, it would give Public Works back a bay for their, their vehicles.
I would agree with that statement. I mean, anything's better than one, especially that far away.
So, maybe we can look at that as an alternative to this parking area. And I'm, I'm aware of the parking area that you're discussing, but I'm looking at what was listed as a priority and nowhere on that priority, other than what I see on your list, did it say that the parking was a priority? And I don't see anybody from SO here or so to answer that question. I think that answers my questions. I think the other supervisors kinda covered some of the bases I have written down here. So, I see your lights on, Mr. Mills?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, I see a parking lot that's not as big a priority as a bay. And I think we need to look at what can we accomplish as short-term priorities and, and improving efficiency as a result. And I think the Supervisor Guerra Mendy's point about the storage, that that's a critical need because in the case of the auditor, how many steps do you have to go to get documents out of your storage container?
Uh, well, I believe I have the largest storage unit at, um, the local storage area.
Where is that?
Um, Calaveras Storage. Um, it's a, it's a four unit and we had the walls taken out.
So, every time she needs to go get a document, she has to go over there?
We have to, we have to drive, we have to drive there.
Yeah, to get over there and drive over there.
Exactly. So, that, to me, that efficiency by itself screams that has to be as much of a priority as anything else. It's how do we reduce staff time, steps that could be used for productive...
Right. So, the, the issue with my, so this would be part of the, the kind of analysis of the types of storage that we need. Um, so, similar to the district attorney needing to have secured storage, um, I have to have secured storage. So, I have to keep our payroll records for forty years. Um, and then in some cases, it's longer than that. It just depends. Um, and so, we're, you know, trying to go through as much as we can to, you know, we're using document imaging as much as we can. We've reduced the amount of paper that we use in my office everywhere possible. Exponentially, it's gone down, but we still use an enormous amount of storage and it generally has to do with payroll records because we're required to store all of that. And right now, it's, it's not in a, uh, there's been leaks in there, um, you know, so we get mold on the, on the, um, the, the paper. We still have to keep it. Um, so, you know, ideally, if we could find some sort of, um, document imaging solution that we could have someone wear a mask and, uh, scan all of that black mold paper, uh, then we could start getting rid of some of those things. But ultimately, if we were gonna look at any sort of onsite storage, that would still have to, um, be secure at some point. So, we're making sure that, you know, other, um, staff are not getting in there. Just a locked-off area.
And, and this might shift gears a little bit, but, um, coming from the HVAC industry, our current equipment at, being built at sixty-four and sixty-five when they were making Nash Ramblers, uh, kinda gives us a clue that they're eating us out of house and home. And not just in energy use, but also in manpower and amount of time that we're taking to maintain equipment that there's just no parts available anymore for them. Uh, so, that coupled with the roofs. I, I see some real critical short-term things here and I think that the bay, the storage, replacing that roof so we don't lose a building, uh, getting the jail demolished because if we don't, we're never gonna move on. Uh, we don't need to talk about building the building right at the moment, but AC or improving the, uh, the systems, I think is a critical piece of this too. As we'll be, if we could save twelve thousand dollars a month in storage by doing it right and save efficiency by doing it right, there's just a whole bunch of other things that are gonna come along as a result. So, I wanna be sure that whatever we expend money on or give direction to expend money on, that it's going to achieve a very quick turnaround in terms of capital that comes back into our budget.
Supervisor Guerra Mendy?
Yeah, I would agree. Supervisor Mills, I think we have to, you know, we're laying out, we don't know exactly what the DA's building's gonna cost, so basically, you're asking us to give you direction to figure that thing out. Um, you know, we have the, the storage space is, is an excellent example. We should also talk about in the future HHS, which is our largest and most expensive rental. And, uh, you know, they are the Nordstroms of development, um, as far as an anchor tenant. So, that might be, that's down the road, but I would like it, you know, somewhere in the next year or so to really, I know you're having conversations about it, but as we get more serious about it. So, I guess it's a matter of breaking down all the various questions we've got to answer now.
Yeah, and I, I have, um, I didn't notice on here when we were talking about, and I didn't notice in the memo or the other narratives that you had attached, um, when we were talking about committing three point five million dollars for the DA's office, um, to be constructed at the old jail once it's torn down. What, what square footage were we looking at for that price?
In your report, you'll go to page twenty-five.
The report we just got?
This, uh, the bound report, sir. Yes.
Okay. What page?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay.
Uh, this is also, should be in your email. And in the email, if you go to the table of contents, you can click on any line and it'll, it'll hyperlink it directly to the page that you want to. So, the email is...
Okay, so, we're looking at fourteen thousand square feet, so we're looking at?
Yes, sir.
And that's a single story? Single story able to add on outward at later dates?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And what is the footprint of that building now as far as square footage?
Ten.
Ten?
Yes, sir. And there's twenty. Twenty total.
Twenty total.
Twenty total that is encompassing the jail and the, you know, the old jail and the old sheriff's office. Cause it's, it's, it's spread out in the second floors and, but twenty thousand is your total footprint of that building's...
And then the chemical storage building that you spoke of there and which is there, are there chemicals being stored in there now?
A few, not many.
A few? And, and I wonder if those are evidence being kept for that because I think there, any of the new stuff is kept over there, so, um...
Well, you know, our main concern about the remediation of the shed is the, is the seepage over the last twenty...
Yeah, but it would be engulfed in that footprint.
It would be.
Yeah, it would. Unless you come back this way where the parking lot is now.
Right.
Um, taking away that parking space that's being utilized at the moment.
Right. As, you know, as I was trying to explain, when we, when we talked about the jail and the sheriff's office in conjunction with this hazardous waste shed, if you will, that's really not part of the sheriff and jail's footprint. We put them together because of the remediation portion of it.
Okay.
But it's not really part of it.
Okay.
Um, and so, if you'll take a look on, on page twenty-five, the subtotal excluding trailers and, and victim witness and all of that is, is ten thousand four hundred. And so, the reason why we did it that way is because if you wanna go ahead and, and, and add another five thousand square foot with these numbers, you could do it. Um, CAO Lutz has, uh, the Excel file too, so...
So, the three point five was the ten thousand four hundred?
Yes, sir.
This did not include the grand jury or evidence space or any of that added four thousand square feet or thirty-six hundred square foot?
Correct.
Okay, so, ten thousand four hundred square feet for the three point five million.
Well, and to Mr. Degenhart's point, their estimate was three point oh nine. Um, the three point five was, and was looking at, we'll know, actually, that was a separate item that was, um, put on there. Three point five was for the actual building, um, cost portion. So, I built it in there with the idea that per their discussion on that previous page, if we were trying to add storage to it, um, which would be more open space, less, um, less offices that might cost more to add that piece into it to give them the storage.
I think if we decide, if we decide to move forward on the, if we decide to move forward on the DA's building, um, I hope that once we get into final design, we could go through and talk about what's actually in there and sort of dig deep into the numbers.
And, and I think that's where I was headed with this.
Yeah.
You know, in addition to moving forward with storage that Supervisor Mills had talked about and some of the other things, is at least go into the initial design portion of this building. Uh, doesn't mean we're gonna build it tomorrow, but we would go into the design and, and at least have the plans, um, set there and ready to go when we get to that point. I mean, that would be one of my recommendations going forward here.
I just wanted to clarify, uh, that evidence is included in the ten thousand four hundred. Some basic evidence space is included. And you can see it, um, listed on page twenty-five up in the basic functions. There's evidence viewing of two hundred square feet plus evidence storage collection and processing of four hundred square feet in the basic ten thousand square foot building. Then in the fourteen thousand square foot, sort of enhanced program has even additional space. They really have next to nothing right now, so...
Actually, four and a quarter feet.
Yeah. So, the, the ten-four is sort of the minimum functional building. And the fourteen thousand is sort of, this would be a much more comfortable place to be and would include everything really that Barbara was looking for. Also, um, as Mark pointed out, there's a lot more square footage that will be available site area when the old jail and sheriff's is demolished. So, there would be the possibility to build some additional shell square footage, which I think Tim was alluding to there at a lesser square foot cost than what we're really spending on the DA building, which requires a much higher level of security and sort of, a substantial building as opposed to what she has right now.
Supervisor Guerra Mendy, your lights on?
I'm sorry.
So, Supervisor Mills, um, your recommendations are to go forward with, give staff the, um, direction to go forward with looking for storage, um, to construct, um, a storage facility here, demolish the jail. the jail. And what was the other point you gave?
The roof replacement, I think, is critical. And I think also, we need to look at our HVAC air handling systems as a, just a, it's beating us up.
In this building?
In, in all of these buildings.
In all buildings.
Absolutely. And I think you had a cost on that at one time. Was that, CAO Lutz, you had a cost on that at one point?
Yes, and that was in my breakdown that we knew we were estimating about eight hundred thousand dollars for the roof replacements across the campus. And then, there was also the HVAC piece that, oh, I see, it isn't in my sheet here. We did have some funds set aside that we were already doing that. That's why we just replaced parts to the air handling unit here in this building and have been addressing HVAC as a general issue across the campus.
Here's one thing I want to tell you about HVAC, though, is that we don't want to go out and make a bulk purchase and replace every HVAC in this place in one year. These needs to be staged in. They need to be stepped in over a period of five to ten years. So that we just, just like replacing a car, we think about that and we stage it in. So, I'm not asking for all of them to be replaced, but I do think the ADA upgrades are a critical piece to this as well.
And I would add to that, come back to us with the cost to go forward with at least the initial concept and design of a building to replace the old jail for the DA's housing.
Uh-huh. I agree.
I would, I would, I would concur with all those points. Glad we're getting some of this immediate stuff done right now. So, that's a good thing. And I agree that we should probably move forward with getting some initial preliminary designs and sort of put a little meat on the bone of the DA's thing. I think we still, we should probably still talk about who's going to move where afterwards, so people can begin to plan. It sounds like we've got to make some decisions about these, this boardroom and the room next door and how we want to take on that.
Supervisor Mills, your lights on?
Are we looking for a poll here at this point?
Yeah, well, let's hear what Mark has to say first.
Just real quickly, I, I just wanted to mention that on page twenty-four of your report, the bound report, and then on the following page are the layout designs that Michelle Plotnick had done on behalf of the DA. So, when I talk about the east end of the admin building, that's what you're seeing here. And as far as the changes to the chamber that we're in now, yes, correct. I just wanted to draw your attention to these because earlier when we were talking about how it would work and what the breakout would be. And so, as you take a look, she's not suggesting that we build new walls or new offices at all. But the atrium, which is right out here, we would encompass that and turn that into office space.
Actually, that is not the case.
You wouldn't have to change much at all, just, you know, it just...
This is like the Sumpert Leger.
Well, that and shag carpet, and we're good to go.
I don't think we're going to have the master's orders.
Anyway, I just wanted to bring those two drawings to your attention.
So, I would, we've got some direction that we just talked about. So, we'd take a poll on those items, starting with Supervisor Clapp.
I'm in.
You're in? Supervisor Mills?
Yes.
Supervisor Olivera?
Yes.
Supervisor Garamendi?
I'm in, but I hope that we've got that.
The other stuff, too, and I'm in too. So, you have direction.
And then, in terms of permanent long-term home for this building, HR versus, versus the EOC versus a combination, and then interim with the district attorney, I just want to confirm what the board's intent is on each of those areas, if, if they're, if you're wanting to weigh in at this point or not.
Supervisor Mills, I, you know, I would like to see some design conception on us, the timeframe that it would take if we were to move over there, if you set that up for us. I'm in agreement, it'd probably be best if we're going to open this up on this end that we would be in that side over there. But we need, I'd like to see some, some numbers and some, some timeframes on how long it would be before we got over there to open this up, and some cost parameters, somewhat estimated cost parameters, and what the design is for here. So, we have some way of knowing what you can bring back to us for our approval or what have you. I, I see what we just got here, and I haven't had a chance other than a couple minutes to look at this design and orient where we're at and what's going on. I would like some time to do that myself versus anything else that you come up with to bring back to us, showing that and the, and the timeframe of what needs to be done over there. Because basically, over there right now, you have a clean slate, more or less.
And for clarity, in case people are wondering in the audience, this is the same report that was attached to the board agenda packet. So, I want to make sure that everybody knows that this was, was already sent out.
I don't, maybe I missed one. I don't, I didn't see all of this in there. But anyway, Supervisor Mills, do you have anything to say?
Well, actually, CAO Lutz, you sent it out as an email as well. There was two attachments. This was a second attachment, is what you've got here. So, and I agree. I think that we need to have a full and complete understanding of this cost and timelines and all of that. So, I'm on page with that.
Supervisor Clapp?
Yes.
Supervisor Olivera?
I would agree.
I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt, but I don't have any idea what you guys are polling about. We were talking about what's in the packet and what the report was, and then we started taking a poll, so I got lost. Sorry.
Can I, can I try and, can I restate to see that I'm understanding, so I know we're delivering what the board would like?
Yeah.
So, what they would like...
Catch up, Diane.
You were asking about bringing the DA, or, excuse me, HR over here and going down that path. But yet, I think none of us, we may be a little bit confused on what you're talking about there without anything in front of us to show what we, you know, I haven't had a chance to study this, I'm sorry. It may have came in an email, but I went through my packet and have not seen any of this layout that was presented here. I need time to look at this and see what it belongs with and what we're talking about here before I can give you direction on whether I agree with it or not. And I think that's what we were talking about. We're, we're looking for some time to go over and, and find out, maybe bring back to us a complete plan on what, what it is you'd like to see done. HR has said that they prefer not to come over here. They prefer to be separate, but that's what I heard earlier.
And I guess, you know, and thank you, Diane, because I was just as confused. Because I'm looking at the highest priority recommendations and the second priority recommendations. And then, so...
Plan A, Plan B, and Plan C.
Right. And so, yeah, so I'm just, I'm, I guess I'm confused if, if you're waiting, if you're wanting to basically scrap both of these sections of, of recommendations until cost numbers come back?
I am interested in seeing, I mean, he has options A and option B and option C. But all it says is this scenario. It doesn't, it doesn't, in case what's going to happen to this chamber, what's going to happen to the rest of the building in order to accommodate all that, it doesn't show any plan for us moving over there. I, I would like some clarification on all of that before I say, yeah, go forward on it and find out, well, that's not what I was thinking was going on. I mean, I'm sure that's going to happen. We want some clarity if you want to come back to us and, and go with your option A. And we can say, okay, option A, but come back to us with some clarity on what it is other than, yeah, and what's the step and the time process involved in it. That's all I'm saying. I have nothing other than this is option A, okay?
And I think the, the reason that it isn't as fleshed out at that point is in order to gauge the board's interest in certain areas, to make sure that we don't spend money on architectural plans for HR that obviously would be very different if it were for OES. So, that, that was, I think, the helpful piece for us is, are we looking for a longer-term goal with HR here, with a HR and the EOC here, which then kind of gauges what we bring forward?
And I think Judy wants to chime in on, on her, because what I, I had heard earlier is that, that HR would prefer to stay separate because of employee situations becoming...
Well, when it was first introduced to me, I told him I'd move over my dead body. Or no, I said I would quit first before I moved.
I believe you said you would quit.
I would quit first before I moved. So...
How do you really feel?
I had a very strong reaction in the beginning, because when I first started with the county, they were trying to put HR where admin used to be. And with my staff, with what comes with my staff, that's impossible. We have, as much as we are trying to get things into the document management system that you granted me last year, thank you, it's a process. And it is going to take us several years before we can, can, you know, make a movement or make a dent in the, the amount of paper that we have. And so, we have a great deal of termination files. We have a great deal of personnel files that constantly have to always be behind locked doors. We clean our own offices because they're behind locked doors. And so, just making sure that we have that amount of space, I probably overreacted a little bit when it was first brought up to me. But with the close interaction that my office now has with the admin office, I am always running down here. And there's been times where, you know, Tim's caught me, you know, late trying to coordinate different things. And so, I think that the admin office, the human resources office, we could collaborate even better and streamline a lot of our processes and work even more efficiently when we're in closer proximity. And so, I just want to clarify that. And I've talked to my staff. And my staff, you know, their main concern is that we have enough space for what we have to do, that they have offices, because what we do is very confidential. I can't have my staff in cubicles, because if the recruiter is on the phone trying to get people in, and my, you know, benefits program assistant is talking to somebody about their FMLA leave, those are conversations that can't intermix. And so, those, those are just our concerns. And then, after talking, that we would be more front-facing, then the employees wouldn't be walking past county council or admin, things like that, to come to our office. So, you know, we are, although we're fine where we're at, we, we do think that we could collaborate better being up here.
And I think we need, just need to work those details out before we come to a final conclusion on it. I mean, this, if you say, where's the best EOC potential in Calaveras County, and believe it or not, it's this room we're sitting in, maybe you can add a basketball court. But the point is, is that it has to be a multipurpose room. It has to be totally independently functional as far as the IT piece of it. And it has to be always ready to go. You can't be, as you know, and we've had this happen in tabletops, you can't be in a situation where you open up a laptop and wait twenty minutes for it to update before it becomes a functional piece of equipment. So, there's, there's an ongoing maintenance that has to happen as part of it. And if you tuck it all into a closet or a cubby hole, it will not be functional when you need it the worst.
Correct. So, I'm inviting myself up to comment.
Yeah.
Because you opened up the EOC conversation. I have to apologize, I only caught the last part of this conversation on my way over here. As far as the ideal EOC, it would be warm all the time. I would have staff working on EOC readiness. We would be making sure the computers are updated and that we wouldn't have a situation where we would be lagging back. I've worked in a variety of different EOC spaces over the course of the past few years where it was literally, you know, like the space outside my office, where I stuffed three tables and fifteen chairs and I was going to make it work. You know, so you make it work, whatever it is. The ideal, of course, is to have co-located OES office space with the EOC, so we can be sure that we're maintaining it, be able to do training in that EOC, be able to create an atmosphere where people are ready to respond in that environment, rather than come in and take the first forty-eight hours to orient themselves to what it is that they're doing. So, those are my long-term wishes for OES and the EOC.
If I might, I think that, you know, I'm trying to look at this from a CAO's position, how he's going to whittle this whole thing down. I would like to, I would like to suggest that, in a motion or a poll, for continuance where we really look at putting HR and the, and the EOC in one this place or the other. I agree with Supervisor Mills about the need for that multipurpose room. We definitely need space, but we also need to be able to go. I like how close it is to your office and the CAO's office. So, you know, and then, but I would like a lot more numbers about the whole, and I understand what Ms. Plotnick is saying about the space, but before we sink a bunch of money into our offices, this, I need to, I need to be convinced that that's a wise investment. There's, there's optics piece and then there's a practical piece. And we've got people who don't have, you know, trailers that are leaking, whether we need to spend money on this. But I'm open to the discussion.
And I'll agree. Open discussion on it also. Barbara, you have something you want to say? And then, we'll open it up to public comment. So, I see you're, you're standing patiently by, Al.
That's fine. Thank you, Al. It did, as I was sitting here, it seemed like we had kind of jumped to the long-term possibilities for this building, which is, which is fine. And that's great, because long-term means that we've dealt with the short-term and maybe I can be part of the long-term plan somewhere else. So, but I just want to, you know, go back to this interim movement here and inquire, is, is my office, should we start packing? Or are we just completely closed out of this building and we just kind of have to wait and see what's going to happen with a, a future build? And we are certainly willing to wait if it's going to be moving forward, you know, if there is a commitment and a decision, very soon, maybe the next board meeting, to, to go ahead and take that leap and not kick the can down the road, but kick down that building so we can start moving forward. My staff is willing to wait, because we don't want to waste any money. We don't want to waste money moving. We don't want to take up the valuable real estate that could be used for somebody else. We don't want to be in a way. You know, my fear, however, of course, is my building is a temporary building fourteen years ago. And we do not want to be stuck in that building for another fourteen years. If we are going to be in another temporary location for fourteen years, we'd rather be here where at least our security is a little increased. You know, I do have kind of a motivation in the back of my head that moving in this building, while I promise we will try to be good neighbors, will be a daily reminder to, to do something for us to get us out. I'm very well aware that there are probably much better uses of this space, admin, county council, the board. You know, it'll be a big inconvenience for us and for you for us to be here. So, that is kind of my pitch, to try to get a commitment, to go for it with the jail, start working on some plans. And if we are given a priority budget, because I keep hearing that we're a priority, if we are given a priority budget, you know, I would, I might make some different decisions on what goes into the building. And I would certainly invite all, all the input. Because, for instance, for our large meeting space, for a criminal grand jury room, that's not an extra. That's not just a bell and whistle and something to look pretty. That is a very, very important piece of the justice system in this county. You might not be aware that we, once the grand jury is sworn in by the court, they kick us out. We don't get to use the courthouse. We have to beg, borrow, and steal some other, steal is not probably the best choice of words, but we have to beg for other space that we have to secrete a criminal grand jury. And it's very difficult. And that is a very key piece of the administration of justice in this county. So, I, I might make people share offices or do something different with the space so we can have, have that integral piece. So, if we are able to go forward, I would hope that my office would be involved in some of those key decisions. But, you know, I do want to try to clarify what the board is feeling with us moving in here on a temporary basis. And once again, if we are going to move forward, we'll take a step back. But if we're not going to move forward and move forward quickly, I, my request is for my office to come in this, come in this building.
I've got a quick question for you. How many times has this county sworn in a criminal grand jury?
Not as often as I'd like. We've gone for it twice this last year. We didn't have enough people show up at one time. So, my goal is to do it twice a year.
Okay. All right.
And we would use the space for other things. It would not only be used twice a year. We have a lot of outreach, prevention... We have a lot of outreach, prevention programs that we would like to get started, and we can't do those without a space. We end up having to use the sheriff's office meeting space a lot for our meetings, whenever we have large group meetings. For instance, if we have a major homicide case and we have to meet with the victims next of kin, sometimes it's 20, 30 people, and we have to take them off-site. So, you know, we would use the space a lot.
Have you visited the civil grand jury room? You have? Okay.
I'm sorry?
The civil grand jury's office room? Have you been there?
Yes, I have.
Yeah?
Uh-huh. And I've been thinking, you know, is there a way we could share a criminal grand jury room with the civil grand jury?
Thank you for knowing that path.
Yeah, yeah. I, you know, for their regular meetings, absolutely. For their committee work, I don't think that would work. But I haven't approached them with that to see if there is a way to have that work together because that would be a very good thing to get them out of where they are as well. So, I'm definitely open to it. It just is something that we have not crossed that bridge.
Thank you.
So, I can't promise. Okay.
That was my question.
I think we pretty much committed to the idea of remediating the old jail, getting it demolished, you know, starting to develop some kind of plans for what that new building would look like going forward. So, if that's the comit that you're looking for, that's where we're gonna go. And, you know, when we make a statement that begins the political discussion and the political will to move forward in a specific area. So, I think there's been a lot of discussion here today and the developing of a political will to, in essence, clean up the campus, make it more functional for everyone, and make it a very inviting place to work again.
And yes, we just took the poll and we were in agreement to at least get the conceptual design going on it and allowing the money to tear down the existing jail. So, we are moving forward.
And I can assure you, I am highly motivated to get you plans quickly.
All right, I'm gonna open it...
And to quote Mick Jagger, you can't always get what you want, sometimes you get what you need. We'll figure it out.
And I will open it to public comment. Al, you've been waiting patiently.
This is a very interesting discussion. Al Segala, Taxpayer Association. I have some background in construction, public works. And the first question I have, what's our population going to be in 50 years? Do we have an idea? 25 years? Do we have an idea about that? It seems like what we should be looking for is solutions that would last 50 years. And we're talking about a new office building, basically. Some parts of the office building have to be special for security, but we're not building a jail. And so, the types of offices that would go in there besides the district attorney are kind of open. There's nothing that says they can't, we can't have other kinds of offices in there besides the district attorney. Why can't that be a multi-level building? Three-story or four-story? The upper stories can be used for storage. The lower storage, the lower floors could be used for immediate occupancy. Does that make sense? Also, if the question is funding, it may be possible that this could be done on some sort of a lease with option-to-buy arrangement where the private sector would build it and we would lease it for a number of years, owning it after that period of years. And it's a thought. Thank you.
Good afternoon. This is interesting. None of my, parts of my office are involved in the space part of it, but I did want to comment that I do like to develop the pre-approved contractors list because I think my window might be in by now. So, I just wanted to say, I think that's a great idea, so. And the money hopefully is still out there for my window counter. I think it's in next year's budget because it's not here now, so, okay.
A little over an hour, Barbara. A little over an hour.
For clarification, you mean your window area?
My counter and window.
That was put in at mid-year budget, so, yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure that the funds are still there.
That was already done.
Okay. All right, thank you. Because they did help me and they were quite helpful, so, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Any other public comment?
Just for, because my entire office is listening to this and my own personal, you know, so you talked about the highest priority recommendations, which, you know, I absolutely agree with, but the reconfiguration of my office space as well. One of the things that I'm looking at and I need to know if I need to wait or just move forward with it is also doing reconfigurations of our existing cubicles and desks. We're getting a lot of complaints of, it's just not a, it's not a good working situation where we're getting complaints of neck pain and eye strain and kind of cramming people into cubicles that are probably not the right configuration for them. So, I have been looking at different configurations for that as well, and I talked to Tim about that as well. But if we're going to do a true reconfiguration of my space, I don't want to purchase a bunch of desks that are not inexpensive and then have to turn around and have a different reconfiguration.
All right, Rebecca, are you looking at also ergonomic changes?
We're looking at ergonomic changes, which I have asked for someone to come in and discuss some of the ergonomic changes that could occur in my office. And I believe Judy said that there was a contract that's going around, but...
It's a further to inhale the, I'm gonna talk to somebody.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to confirm that you don't think your office should move over to this building?
No, but I do think that it, you know, and I had talked to Michelle and Mark when they were over here, you know, it's, I think what happened in our building is it just, things just kind of got shoved wherever they got shoved and kind of you stuck people in corners and closets and wherever you could fit a desk, that's what you did. And so, to me, you know, and I had talked to them, it doesn't make a ton of sense to have, for instance, the mailroom right at the front entrance of the county. It probably makes more sense to have the mailroom back where payroll is and then open, because I had to move staff into an old conference room, so I have a conference room that I have one person in, and then there's walls, and then I have this like little teeny-tiny office, and then I've got this row of cubicles. There's just, in some cases, there's not a point for some of those walls. It would make more sense to move the one poor person that's down in payroll right now down to probably on the other side where the mailroom is. And then, I would have more room for where we need to have meeting spaces. Right now, when you walk into my office, you're walking into our kitchen, which is just not the most professional way of meeting. So, it's just, we need to have a better face for the public and we need to have better, a better working environment for staff. And they've been good players along with it so far, but it's kind of like I keep telling them, you know, I'm working on it, we're working on it, if you just wait a little bit. So, I just want to also understand where you are at with regards to that recommendation and timeframe.
I just, I don't want the chairman to speak directly to the question, but I just wanted to make sure because I do see the synergies with the administrative office. And I know IT doesn't want to move down to your space, but I do know that, I believe, ag commissioner needed floor space on a ground floor for weights and measures and other things. So, I mean, it's a lot of moving parts, but if you're not, that could be further down the road conversation.
I think, and I think, you know, if you think about it, one of those puzzles where you have to move the numbers.
Right.
Right? You know, in an ideal situation, you know, probably the, you know, it might make sense to have the ag department in the same building with environmental health.
Right.
But you can't do that until IT is out of there. But you can't move IT out of there until you figure out where they're gonna go. Well, my office space doesn't make sense if they want to go into the DA's old modular building because they basically want a bullpen, and that's what we call it. And that's conducive to their, how they work. There's not a lot of other spaces where you can have a bullpen unless you want to give them an old boardroom. So, you know, it's trying to look at what makes sense. So, I think kind of that numbers game is, it may not make logistical sense because of how everyone else is gonna move to move my office over here, but, you know, like Judy said, it may make a lot more sense for her to move over here. And I'm not opposed to either. I mean, if there's space over here to have my office move over here, I'm fine with that. I just need to get a game plan together because, you know, right now, we're, you know, we're doing what we can to make the office equipment as comfortable for staff as we can, but I just need to have a better game plan going forward.
And if I could also add another benefit of HR in this instance is because HR is under the administrative office already, we could more easily share clerical resources, combined resources that wouldn't, that would allow us to kind of pool some of those pieces because HR also has confidential employees.
Right. I mean, in that last poll, we're gonna investigate HR over here. I just, controller right there, I just want to double-double check.
Well, I'm not opposed to doing some type of redesign of your office and moving stuff around. There's certainly a lot of options that we can do, and perhaps the CAO can look at maybe putting something out to have a conceptual redesign. I'm gonna agree with you, walking into the kitchen is not good. We could maybe, you know, there's a lot of different options that are available. We can move doors and close off those doors and reframe them up and take care of them and redesign and move things around to where you enter into your office and it's a little opening there where, you know, you can have public and greet them without saying, wait a minute, my coffee's boiling.
Yeah, or someone just heated up broccoli.
Yeah, or something. So, you know, I'm not opposed to that. I think it's probably a good idea, and the time has probably come. So, I don't know where the rest of the board members are on it. Maybe they want to chime in on that.
All right, I can turn to Mr. Chair. Before we sign off, I want to make sure that, you know, Mark, as you look at the storage issues, please take a look at the archives. I see our clerk is with us, and how we can preserve those documents.
You know, and one other thing you may want to look into, and I was just running through my head, I know there's a hallway there between yours and Public Works, and I don't know exactly what could be done, that whole utilization of that hallway. I know there's some meagres and eyegress and so forth to be utilized there, but there may be something that can, some design concept where some of that can be utilized as office space and closed off and still have the egress and eyegress.
And that's true. And the only reason I remember this is because my mother worked here in the late 70s, so when preschool was closed, I actually had to come to work and play under her desk. That whole, that all used to just be one floor. And there was, it was actually, where part of my office is, was actually a break room and a lunch area and a meeting room. So, I mean, it did used to be, it would just depend on the whole, now we have to have, you know, two entrances, two exits, we have to... But I can tell you right now, I have two offices that do not have double, like payroll's not getting out, they're on their own. And so is my property tax manager. So, it's, you know, we're in a position right now where it's just not, I don't think it's the most safe environment anyway. So, I would just, and I've thought about that, too. There might be some, you know, way of doing that, I'm just not sure.
Yeah, well, we'll see what they come up with and keep that in mind. That hallway is not, you know, it's just a hallway right now. There was a couple of office meeting rooms there at one time, not too long ago, but certainly to look into and keep the eyegress and egress and maybe open up the back. So, there is a way to exit the building back there.
Yeah.
I want to say before we close that this is probably the most complete discussion on space planning that's occurred in this county, and I can't think of how many years. And I appreciate everybody's input and their time and thoughtfulness in trying to make this work for everyone. Once we start the discussion, again, that's what gets things moving, is starting that discussion. So, thank you all for what you've done to at least get this on the road. And now, let's just take the next steps. Rebecca?
Perhaps I missed my window. Rebecca Turner, county clerk recorder. I came over when I heard about storage, and I don't want to be, say, I'm potentially the largest storage area, but I think with archives and elections and the recorder records, it probably is so. So, we have records at the archives that are recorder's records along with other county records, both permanent, well, permanent records and archives, but both confidential and public records. We also, in the bottom of Colombo Building, have, I think, the largest space there that we keep our election records, we keep our election equipment, temporary election records, permanent voter registration records, as well as some of our recording land records there, too, because they don't fit in archives and they don't fit in our building. We also, as you see when you come in, we have books in our office for records that need to be kept. So, when you guys are thinking of storage, I hope that it's considered that we have election and recording records all over the place. And you even mentioned, well, how much time does it take? Probably on a weekly basis, one of us has to go down to Colombo or one of us has to go down to archives to go get records because the public needs them currently. We are working on everything being scanned so it's more available, but sometimes it's not, and even our fish sometimes is not readable. So, we're still going down and getting the records from the books. It's just what it is, so. Anyways, if you keep in mind, and the records at archives right now are not temperature-controlled, they're no, by no means humidity-controlled, so our permanent books really should not be housed in that building, but it's all we have right now. So, that is where they are. And the election equipment is kept downstairs in Colombo, which is fine most of the year. However, when we do our testing on the equipment, it's technically open to the public and it's not ADA accessible, which is an issue. So, there are reasons for that to be open. Ideally, it's a nice big space that election night, it would be ideal to use that for results coming in at the end of the night, but because it's ADA accessible, we can't do it. When we do our logic and accuracy testing, nobody has ever asked to come view us, but if they were to, again, it really should be ADA accessible, and it's not. So, those are just my few things when we think about storage.
Well, let's hope the Colombo Building never floods down there.
Luckily, when it did, we keep our stuff off the ground, so we do keep everything up off the ground.
You're far enough off the ground.
Yes, but it has flooded, and it smells like it floods regularly, so.
And just to add on to that, we also do keep board of supervisors' records there as well.
Yeah, board of supervisors.
At Colombo downstairs.
So, there would be some easy fixes to get more space into archives, however, it would be ideal if it was humidity and temperature-controlled first. But we could put crank shelving or something in there and probably get all of the books to then fit in the one location. However, whenever I have anyone look out for redoing our books, they're, well, you're not gonna put them back in that building, are you, when it's done because they're just gonna fall apart again? So, anyways, that's what we do for storage. I think that's all I am, is a storage facility.
We just get, do we get the roof, the roof is fixed, though, right? We don't have the leak problem?
Yeah, the roof was fixed.
Okay.
Shannon was happy that the roof was done, yes.
Okay, well, thank you.
We're not growing weed or anything. It's just the ag department. All right, that was informational. And so, we give direction to staff. Hopefully, you understand all the stuff we told you.
So, there was no second poll, right?
Diane, I can't wait to read the minutes.
Me, too. Me, too. So, there was no second poll? If I, because I don't, there wasn't one that I heard. So, there was no poll regarding moving HR and the EOC, correct?
I guess we didn't do a formal poll?
Because I kind of got it that when you went through it, that we did get to a second poll of bring back a, basically what it would look like and what the better cost picture would be if we put HR here with the EOC as the double piece, looking at what it would cost if we moved the board chambers to that location versus keeping it here. That was what I got.
Correct. That's what we're looking for. And then, also to that, we didn't really take a poll as far as the auditor's office and coming up with some type of plan for reconfiguring their office. And we're all in agreement with that, the four of us that are here?
Yeah.
Yes, so, okay? So, that was informational. Are we good to move on to the next item? You want to take a break? All right, we will take a 10-minute break. Okay, we're back from break. Madam Clerk, item number 25.
Item 25...
Item 25 is from the administrative office, to establish a 2018-19 Legislative Affairs Ad-Hoc Committee to review critical legislative matters and draft a 2018-19 county legislative platform.
Okay, before we get into this, I have something to say about this particular item. When I brought this up on March 20th, this is not what I had talked about. I think the CAO may have a little bit of miscommunication on what I was talking about. When we met with CCWD on our monthly meetings, CCWD had indicated that they were, had a contingency of, of a couple of their directors and their CAO to, they were traveling to Washington DC to talk to officials there and looking for money for their projects or what have you. That was one of the conversations they had, and I had mentioned at that time that the board used to do that. The first year that I was on the board, 2009, I went back with Russ Thomas. We were looking for a bunch of different things, and one of them was the Coscove, relief for Coscove Creek and getting permits for that, to get it cleared out, along with a couple of other items. The sheriff has, has always had, I don't know if they have been doing it recently, sending back a contingency to Washington DC to lobby for, for grants or projects that they're looking for in the SO. And it's done all the time with counties and cities, they're, all of them are back there right now, this is the time season when this happens, lined up for that type of thing. But that's not what I was talking about, 'cause later on during our meeting with CCWD, they had mentioned that they had set up a committee with Amador Water and Amador County and a couple of other water agencies, and they were already sitting on these committee, this committee, dealing with AB 142, the wild and scenic thing that was being brought forward by, by Bigelow. And they offered to have the county have seats at that, on that committee for those discussions. And that's what I was alluding to, that I talked to those, that I told them I would come back to the board and poll the board to see if they were interested in having a seat at that table at that committee, not going back to Washington DC and lobbying. That's not, and I'm sure, excuse me, CAO Lutz misunderstood what I had said, but I think since then he went back to the March 20th video and viewed exactly what I was saying on that time, and he's, he's agrees with me that that's what I was talking about, with the AB 142 and having a couple of supervisors sit on that committee and if we were interested in doing it. So, this, this is not what was supposed to be presented. So, I don't know, I wanna talk to county council or ask county council. That being said, is it better to pull this item off the agenda or can we go forward with setting somebody on a committee if we're interested in setting somebody on that committee? Do we have to re-agendize this?
So, is, there's one sentence here that says presently there is an opportunity to work with our county partners and craft a water rights and water storage legislative platform that would benefit the county overall. Is that accurate as far as you're concerned in terms of what you're hoping for?
Well, I think that's the goal of that committee, is they're interested and very concerned about what is going to happen with this AB 142 bill when it's presented to legislature at the state level and what it's gonna look like when it comes out. Is the gut of it, they're gonna be there, that they're lobbying for in respect to our rights as a county and their water, water rights as a, as a water district for this county, along with the other agencies that are involved with water on that portion of the...
I mean, I think, I think the agenda item covers water legislation, and I think that if you, so I don't, I mean, I think so long as that is in fact the type of legislation you're looking at and it's limited to that, all you would be doing then would really be restricting the committee more than what you put in here, which I think is within the Brown Act. You can make it less than what you announced you might do, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Oliver.
Mr. Chair, I've received numerous communications from constituents regarding the misunderstanding of way this particular agenda item has been written. I would recommend that we have a vote on the way it's written now, and if it is denied, then we present a new motion, if you will, stating exactly what you've indicated here. I think it'll kinda clear up some of the air.
Whatever we could do to clear up, I've, I've received numerous emails also and phone calls on this item, and again, I tried to explain that it, that it's not, this is not what it was supposed to be, intended to be, so I can understand their concerns and their misunderstanding.
Sure, I agree.
So, that's why I said before we got into this, I would try and clarify exactly what was being said. This is not, again, the trip back to Washington DC at the federal level to, as an ad hoc committee trying to put forward whatever our, our personal interests are, that's not what this is about. And I don't think that would be fair, and I don't think I would vote for that myself. So, Supervisor Mills, your light is on?
Yes, let me just kinda clean it all up here. This is what Camera does. The Calaveras, Amador, McColmee River Association, they are your Legislative Affairs Association regarding water and water issues between the two counties. I attend that every month. So, I don't really see the need for an ad hoc committee of the type. They, CCWD, are using Neo Connell as their representative in Washington DC on water, water issues. I think the county at one time did join with CCWD a long time ago, having somebody working together with them. Not that that's what's necessary and that wouldn't be my goal anyway. I think that the board needs to have a more direct interest in federal and state legislation as it's coming down the pike, and I'll give you an example, it would be the mother-in-law apartments. And the result is, is we're, our inability to collect fees. How does that affect Murphy Sanitary or Union Public and their connection of water and sewer? Those are the kinda things that we need to be aware of and be able to take positions and explain to our other legislators why we, we feel that that is a good idea or a bad idea. So, if we're, if we have a, CCWD has had a standing legislative committee of two directors for decades, and the whole purpose of is just to have a continual awareness to legislation that is occurring throughout the area. It has nothing to do with water, it's just things that affect the county, but if we wait until something happens, then we're, we're being reactive. So, I don't know if I'm stepping beyond the line here, council?
Well, I, I think, it's agendized for an ad hoc committee, so if you were to have, you know, right now, the way this is agendized is just for a single-year general legislative affairs, which would include water, is basically the way this is on here. So, if there was a decision to veto this and come back for a standing committee, that's a Brown Act committee, that would have to come back on another agenda. Similarly, if the, if the topic of the ad hoc committee, which has to be time-limited, were to expand beyond what's in the staff report, then we would have to come back.
Thank you, I do understand that. I would, I would say, my, my opinion is to reject this type of recommendation and the request to bring back at a future board meeting, a standing legislative committee made up of the CAO and two supervisors for the purpose of being sure that we have an awareness to legislative activity that is and will affect us in the future. Who's on that committee? I don't think that's the point, and I don't think that those two supervisors should be making any decisions. Those are simply to bring the awareness to the full board on issues and being able to vet them out without spending a lot of full board time on a specific discussion.
Supervisor Garamendi.
You know, Des, we gotta be careful, I'm agreeing with you over and over again today. But I agree that we oughta, that this, this is not right, as far as, you know, there was obviously a miscommunication and we could work through that. I agree with Supervisor Mills that, you know, we've got UMRah, we've got McColmee River Association, we got Camera, a lot of people looking at the water issues. In addition, you know, 142 is a passed and signed piece of legislation, so we've already made a comment to support our water districts and put that into the record for the 142 wild and scenic study. Obviously, there's another conversation that would have to happen, should there be a legislative piece or bill proposed? I think there is value to working with CCWD and, and CPUD, if they're interested, in bringing together a lobbyist in Sac, excuse me, in Washington DC. I don't think it's as much directed towards legislation, but more giving us contacts to agencies for grant monies, for infrastructure development, all those things, and I, I see that regarding a committee, a standing committee, a standing committee is going to have to, while I see the value, will have to go through all the Brown Act notifications. It would seem to me, a lot of other counties use their CAO, CSAC, RCRC to monitor this, and so I'm not opposed to a committee, but I think it ought to be a committee of the whole, and perhaps the CAO can bring, you know, we could have a day meeting every, you know, February when the legislative agenda, when the legislative agenda comes out, we could have, you know, CAO can give us a report that amalgamates all these information from our state organizations, we can talk about it. Maybe we have another meeting where we talk about, okay, what are our federal priorities? How can we go after infrastructure dollars with our community partners and work that out? But I think that having the committee of the whole, we cut down with, you know, potential friction. I think using our CAO and our state organizations and our local organizations, they've got way more resources than we do, so, using that. But I do think we oughta have the conversation about a federal lobbyist. I think it could be beneficial to us, and maybe we do the cap, you know, Calaveras to Capitol tour and we figure out some standing way to do that. You know, some people may really wanna do that trip, some people may rather have a root canal and do that trip, so we could test the, the interest as we go along.
Yeah, I, you know, the way that it happened before is exactly what you were talking about. We didn't have a standing committee, we didn't have an ad hoc committee. When items came that we were, that was affecting our county and legislative deals upcoming at federal or state level, we had it on the agenda and we discussed it in, in an open meeting, just like we are right now. And, and if there was going to be a trip to Washington because we had the funds available and we were looking for, for lobbying for projects that we were gonna do or money for any of the projects, it was chosen right here at that day who was gonna, who wanted to go on that trip. It, it wasn't an ad hoc committee that was selected and was gonna go with the CAO or even a standing committee. It was all done in the open, and, and when, I don't think we had discussed that any further than at that time when CCWD had brought up their, and they're there now, they're there back there this week. I, I just made the comment that we used to do that, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to doing that again if we had the funds available, and, and there were items there that really was a concern for us at the county level. And again, they are, they have this committee and they are sitting on a committee right now that has to do with AB 142 specifically, not Camera or UMRah or what have you. And they simply asked if we were interested in having a seat at that table, and I, I said I would bring it to the board and ask them if they wanted to do it, that, you know, it's not up to me to make that decision. And that's exactly what we're at now. But I'm all for having an open conversation and having it put on our agenda, or even as brought up at the end when we're doing our announcements, if, if we take a poll on something that has to do with upcoming legislation, either state, federal level, and have Tim bring it back to us for a conversation or what have you. But standing committee or even an ad hoc committee, I, I just don't think, at this point, I would be in favor of that, so. I would like to know if you're interested in, I've heard a couple, but I don't know if you're still interested.
Yeah.
Apparently not, to have somebody sit on, on that committee from the county, they were asking, I think it was in, it was in camaraderie, they were looking and asking if somebody from the county wanted to be on a seat, so.
Mr. Chair, if I could suggest, maybe we could have public comment on this?
We can.
And seeing it was an action item, will sit on the agenda after public comment, I would be prepared to make a motion to deny as written this agenda item. That way it kinda opened the door and cleared the air. I think county council, you like having motions on action items?
Well, I think, I mean, we should listen to the public comment and then decide what kinda motion you wanna make.
Al, you're up. You're in line, in first line.
Al Segala, Taxpayer Association. I think you're both right. Gary, you're right. And it would be good for the county to have one of its supervisors on this, it's kind of an ad hoc committee, to, to try to protect the, our water rights. And also, Tim is, man, he's brilliant. That action could be part of a little deeper study of all things that affect not just county government, which you're presently thinking about, I'm thinking about the people in Calaveras County, the taxpayers. The, the state has done things that are just horrible, and yet it continues, and we look to you, we being the public, to try to protect us from the state on, when state makes mistakes. And so, such a committee, ad hoc or whatever, is a really good idea. When new legislation comes up, it could be looked at from the point of view of its effect on our county, not just county government, but the people in the county. And also, the separate issue of the, of the water relationship with the other, the other counties and water districts, that's a good idea, you should, should do that. So, this is really win-win. You oughta compliment your CAO for doing a good job. One of the, there's, well, there's many issues with the state that really could be thought out for a long-term policy for the, for the county, and once you establish that policy, then you can contact CSAC and, oh, the other one, I forget.
RCRC.
Yeah, RCRC. And then you will no longer be the tail wagging the dog, you're gonna be the dog. Okay, they'll be reviewing things you reviewed, and you might have other counties swing right along with you. Okay, now that's really proactive and positive, 'cause you're working for the best interests of your, of your public, not just county government. And, now, does that make sense? Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Hi, board, staff. So, seeing as how you all aren't taking the, the direction that it, it looked like from the agenda, I'm gonna kinda amend what I was gonna say, but I came here today to, oh, my name's Jack Norton, District 1, by the way. So, I came here on behalf of the Community Action Project and the Calaveras Planning Coalition to speak on this item. But this, this committee of other local governments and special districts, I, we believe it's important to, to cooperate with other local governments and districts in lobbying for regional needs, but Calaveras County legislative priorities should first and foremost benefit Calaveras. And to that extent, would ask that you also take consultation with county department heads, local NGOs, and the public on these issues. For example, Calaveras Planning Coalition has been working on water planning since 2006. CPC was an active participant in the preparation of the 2013 McColmee-Amador-Calaveras Integrated Regional Watershed Management Plan. So, we, the CPC, would be keenly interested in providing input on any establishing legislative And I was gonna speak to an ad hoc committee, but I don't think it's really relevant now that that's not the direction you're going. You could also look to San Joaquin County, I'm not... You could also look to San Joaquin County, I'm not sure if that's maybe part of the local government you were talking about in this committee, but they have a committee that establishes state and federal priorities. And their list is very comprehensive and includes a wide range of topics. So, if you weren't planning just on focusing on water, but focusing on a broader range of issues, you may look to San Joaquin County and see what they're doing there. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Other public comments? Seeing none, I'll close public comments. Supervisor Olivera?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move that we not form an ad hoc committee as detailed in Agenda Item Number 25.
Supervisor Garamendi?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Olivera, I'd like to see if you consider a substitute motion, that we not form the ad hoc committee, but that we direct the CAO to work with, I believe it's Mia O'Connell, who's CCWD's lobbyist, and see what a work plan would look like, what it would cost, and how that would benefit us. Would just be my substitute motion.
And to that end, she would be providing you, if we brought her aboard, a monthly update on issues that she felt were of value to you specifically as, this board specifically, and not so much to CCWD, so it'd be a separate report.
Agreed.
Yeah, and I think she was involved at one point with the company we used prior to the crash.
She was.
And before we stopped, she was involved in it, so, yeah.
I would consider those modifications at this time, but I would also add that CAO, let's determine what the compensation package for that is on her behalf, because there is gonna be a cost for it. There is gonna be a cost for it. Sorry about that, but.
It's okay, it's gonna end up around $25,000.
That's what I kind of figured we had. So, I would amend my motion to reflect that, that we have contact with the lobbyist that CCWD uses and determine the cost of that advice. And once again, striking down the formation of any ad hoc committee at this time.
Could I ask for a piece of clarification on the scope for Ms. O'Connell, who I have no problem reaching out to? The question that I have is, CCWD obviously is engaging Ms. O'Connell for specific purposes. My assumption is we would want to be engaging a lobbyist for potentially broader areas that would be beyond the scope of the water rights and what CCWD might be negotiating. I just want to make sure that that's the agreement of the board. Okay. I wanted to find us money.
Absolutely, and that direction would be given when you brought to the board. And what direction we'd like to give to her, we'd have the discussion on what, go back this year and lobby for this, this, and this, and this. And it's an open discussion.
And that would be the entire board, not just two members.
Right.
Yeah, the entire board.
Right.
That's why I said bring it back to this board.
With that, I would second your motion.
So, do I have a second?
Yeah, I just seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. I have a motion by Supervisor Olivera, I have a second by Supervisor Mills, it's getting late here. Call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes by zero. Moving on to Item Number 26, Madam Clerk, we're getting down to the end.
Item 26 is from the Board of Supervisors to the appointment of applicants to serve on various committees, commissions, advisory boards, and county service areas. Before you today, you have three vacancies and three applications. The first is for the Alta Ville Cemetery District for a term ending 12/31/2021, and an application was received from Debbie Ponte. The second is for the Murphy Cemetery District for a vacancy ending 12/31/2018, and an application was received from Karen Kua, I don't know how to say her name, sorry. And the last is a vacancy on the Solid Waste Task Force for a term ending 12/31/2018 for a representative of the City of Angels City Council, and you have an application from Joseph Olivera.
So, the first thing I would ask is, does anybody wish to remove any one of these?
No. Mr. Chair, I have a disclosure. I'm sorry. Mr. Chair, I have a disclosure to make. The applicant of Joseph Olivera is no relation to me, just similar last name. That happens a lot.
Thank you for that disclosure. So, nobody wants to remove any of these members, so we can take a motion for all of them at once. I'll open it up to public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'll move.
Move by Supervisor Mills.
I'll second it.
Second by Supervisor Clapp. Call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes by zero. Madam Clerk, we're moving on to Supervisor's announcements.
Supervisor announcements. In compliance with AB 1234, chaptered as Government Code Section 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on meetings they attended at the expense of the local agency at the next regular meeting of the legislative body. This report is required to include meetings attended for which there has been expense reimbursement, such as mileage, meals, lodging, et cetera, but may also, at the board member's discretion, include any other meeting attended by the supervisor on behalf of the county.
We will start with Supervisor Olivera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. During the last week, after our board meeting, actually, we didn't have a board meeting, did we? I attended the Calaveras County Chamber breakfast on Wednesday, listened to the guest speaker, which is Dave Carazza. That's it, Vacarez, Voice Management, gave a very interesting presentation on garbage history in Calaveras and how his company was formed and what led him to what he's doing now. Once again, I attended that meeting at 7:30 in the morning, was able to make the EPOC meeting at 9:30 in Arnold, and after that short one-hour stay there, I went and joined the folks from Quincy Construction Management to tour the Murphy's Drive Culver Failure Crossing and the Blaken Road. That started the process to get those projects online and hopefully getting those things in line for repair. I'm sorry, what?
I'm sorry.
Okay. I did attend the DSA Dinner along with other supervisors, and we sat at separate tables. But we had a very good time there, very entertaining, food was great, fellowship was wonderful. It worked out very good, I was glad to be part of that. Yesterday, I was in Sacramento for the county's Governor's Task Force Tree Mortality Meeting. Was able to bring Michelle Peterson with us, and she was introduced to the Governor's Task Force and our various people involved in that committee. We had very interesting information, which I'll be reporting out on tomorrow's morning, actually tomorrow's meeting of the local tree task force. But a couple of things that should be noted is, there is a large movement now to form the committee known as the Forest Management in the state of California. That was encompass, that'll encompass CAL FIRE, tree mortality, a variety of other agencies, and making one big group. Funding with that would be about $200 million. Out of that would come definite CAL FIRE work expenditures, the tree mortality program, things of that sort. One thing of note that I should mention, we were provided information by way of memo that Tooluma County had chosen to attack their tree mortality program by funding a million dollars out of their own coffers pending any reimbursement. Additionally, on the storm damage, they funded another $8 million for road repairs. There was concern on the memo submitted to CAL FIRE and to the Governor's Task Force that they have yet to receive FEMA payments, and it's been nearly 10 to 12 months. That was an issue. CAL FIRE stated they are behind due to the large number of claims they had. And if you well may know, they have to process through CAL FIRE, through OES, then up to FEMA for the fire reimbursement. So, they were concerned about that, and that's being processed by CAL FIRE, but they did state that they are behind on those payments. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Olivera. Supervisor Garamendi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had some interesting meetings this week, or last week, I suppose, and this week. Attended some interesting openings and public events, Conifer Communication, ribbon cutting, which I know several of us are at, and that's exciting, having more businesses in San Andreas, Deputy Sheriff Association, First Five, Mental Health Board. I had a very interesting conversation with Pat McGreevy of CAL AM Team, and I know many of us are aware of what they're doing, trying to gather together information about forest health, fire breaks, and healthy forests. And there's some, I think we're getting to this really interesting point, and I think that they're gonna present with CAL FIRE in a few weeks, I imagine, I think. And I think that, you know, we should talk about, we've got these great committees such as, you know, the Tree Mortality Committee, and we're watching the state go into this bigger uber committee. And maybe, you know, that's something we need to think about transforming into, you know, more than just the tree mortality, but forest health and the fire risks, putting that all together. And that might be something that this board wants to take up in the next couple of months of how we want to, is, do we want to transition this committee? Do we need a new committee? It's a conversation we have with OES and the CAO to sort of take that on. So, I wanted to sort of throw it out there, prep everybody a little bit, and see if we could, you know, see what the sort of climate was, if there's something we want to start taking on in the next month or two.
Is that a self-piloting Uber committee?
Yeah. Uber, is it? Yeah, okay.
Supervisor Mills?
Okay. March 27th, met with Amador and Calaveras Water Agencies on AB 142 to make a presentation to Congressman McClain Talk about why the joint agencies were asking for his support on their recommendations as a result of the study that was just completed. He said he would not get in the middle of the fight, which is probably the best we could get. March 28th, took a tour of the flume with Supervisor Olivera, that was put on by Utica Water and Power, specifically looking at the challenges with the 3/4 mile under Darby Knob due to the repairs that have been made after the Darby Fire. That's gonna be an ongoing discussion. April 2nd, met with members of CSA 2 and the county staff, the request of citizens to hear what steps can be taken to reduce dust on the road, and I'm sure that you've got dusty roads in your areas, too. April 4th, attended Good Morning Calaveras, again with some other supervisors. I thought that the discussion on history was quite interesting, but also his thoughts on how solid waste and recycling is gonna happen going forward. That presents some unique challenges, and I think that maybe we need to start thinking about solid waste in that same vein of how are we doing it at Rock Creek? And maybe there needs to be a broader discussion on having recycling right there at Rock Creek and try to divert some waste stream. Attended the, let's see, attended a council of governments, first meeting of the Calaveras Transit, I'm sorry, I took that, because you were there, too. Calaveras Transit Agency JPA Board received the annual audit, which was an improvement over previous year, and approved the call for projects through 2022, 2023. The LTF claim for transit operations is a highlight, not really a good one. April 5th, attended Highway 4 Work Group meeting where, again, the 3/4 mile flume was discussed among the partners. Sent a representative to the opening of Conifer Communications, I think some of you folks were there as well. And April 6th, attended the McCollum River Association meeting at JBID. Great presentation by USFS on fire management protocols. They have a whole different way of fighting fires, I knew that, but I didn't really understand it till I saw their pictures. We heard the Stanislaw National Forest will be required to increase timber removal from 17 to 19 million board feet per year to 75 million per year, which they asked us then to sign on to the master stewardship agreement, which Tooluma County has done, and Mariposa is likewise working on it. The result for Tooluma County this year is $14.7 million.
For which forest do they want to go to?
Stanislaw.
Stanislaw.
75 million, which means what we'd like to do is take the entire Stanislaw National Forest, put it under one management plan, speed up the process. They're saying it's as much as $800,000 to do an EA, an environmental assessment, and it can take as much as 180 days or longer to do those, with having a common assessment already completed, it's down to literally weeks, if not a month, to move it forward. Attended the Taste of Calaveras put on by the Angels Camp Business Association, met with many restaurants, in fact, hotel loge was there, food vendors, wineries, independent businesses, attended the deputy sheriff's dinner. You know, in those dinners like that, I always make a practice to sit with people I don't know, because you can really get in some interesting conversations when you start talking, and I guess the wine kicks in. And also, the MCRWA meeting that was this afternoon, and I'll have to get an update for somebody, because I guess I didn't make it. So, that's all I have, thank you.
Supervisor Clapp?
I attended CSA 1 in Valley Springs for the roads and stuff, and I went to Area 12 meeting, and they'll be presenting something on the board probably in October, I don't know if they got ahold of Tim yet or not. I also attended the Chamber's Good Morning Calaveras breakfast, and we sat at different tables. And I attended the first five with Jack, and I attended last night the Lucky Ten Homeowners. And that's.
That's it. That's enough. Well, I attended the COG and a couple other committees and fundraisers, and that was all mentioned here. I also had the opportunity, I went to the DSA on Saturday night, and then I left the DSA and went to the Quilts of Honor Bunko Tournament, to which I have participated in for the last 12-plus years. It's always a joy to get involved in that fundraiser for that organization, great people there. If you missed it Saturday night, they do it once again in October near Halloween. So, look forward to that, it's a great time. You don't need to know a whole lot about Bunko and playing Bunko, just show up and they'll get you involved in it, and it's a great time for everybody. So, that's Quilts of Honor. So, that's all I have. We will go to CAO Letts, he says no. County Council says no, and this is, well, we might mention that we will have a familiar face back next week on the 17th.
We will.
Yeah, we will. We will thank you for your time that you've spent here for the last six weeks. But we have Megan coming back on the 16th on Monday.
She's back Monday.
See you back on Monday, so.
You are a friend.
But you are leaving to go look for rocks or something, aren't you? Bird, bird hunting, bird watching. Bird watching, okay. We'll have fun. Madam Clerk, do you have anything?
I don't have anything to report, but I would like to wish Supervisor Clapp a happy birthday.
Oh, my. I almost snuck out.
Sing your birthday. Oh, my God. Al, you're gonna sing happy birthday to me?
Gary, can I announce to you that I might have a town hall meeting on the 19th with Supervisor Tofanelli, and we'll be talking about Measure A and some other issues that's coming up on the ballot.
Yes, you can.
Okay, and that'll be 19th at 6 o'clock at the Vets Hall.
At the Vets Hall in Valley Springs. And now, I will go back to public comment period that, if you have not spoke earlier during public comment, you have the opportunity to speak now. Al, did you not speak in public comment earlier? You got up, and I said you were the wrong one, and then you got back up during regular public comment and spoke. You spoke already. You spoke already.
No.
Thank you, Al.
No, I.
He did not.
You did not?
Right.
Okay, Al, you're up. I'll give you three minutes then, by God. You got three whole minutes, and you've already used 10 seconds of them.
I'm wearing his glasses so I can appear to be more intelligent than I really am.
Was that what this is?
I don't, yeah, I don't need it to read this.
It's working.
This is, this is good news. There's a, there's a constitutional amendment that'll be on November ballot. It's the Tax Fairness, Transparency, and Accountability Act of 2018.
It's the Tax Fairness, Transparency, and Accountability Act of two thousand and eighteen. The taxpayer protections are under attack. Two California court decisions have gutted the taxpayer protections enacted by voters under two state ballot measures, Proposition two eighteen in nineteen ninety-six and Proposition twenty-five in two thousand and ten. As a result of these recent court decisions, unelected state bureaucrats can impose taxes, fees, and charges on taxpayers without even a majority vote of the state legislature. Local governments are free to impose new and higher taxes by simple majority vote or possibly by council vote only and no public vote at all. Both state and local governments can impose fees without a clear and direct connection to the services provided. Even worse, taxes, fees, and charges can be imposed without any clear requirement that the funds be spent where the politicians promise. So the ballot, this ballot measure will hold politicians accountable and increase transparency when taxes are raised. Signatures are now being collected for qualification of this measure, which will require any tax, fee, or charge imposed by state bureaucracies be approved by the state legislature. Number two, require all local taxes be approved by two-thirds vote of local voters. Require all local fees be approved by two-thirds vote of the local elected officials. Require the uses of any new tax, fee, or charge be clearly identified before the tax, fee, or charge is enacted. Taxpayers deserve the right to vote on the taxes they pay, and no new improved taxpayer funds will be spent where promised. Please support the Tax Fairness, Transparency, and Accountability Act of two thousand and If you could, I sent you an email, which was attached or forwarded from Howard Jarvis, and there, there's a form to sign individually if you agree with this, and then if enough of you agree with it, put it on the agenda and vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Thank you for this information. Thank you. Any other public comments? Anybody that did not speak earlier? Seeing none, I will close public comment period, and we will be adjourned.